Here we go. I got my Gatorade. Where are my Gatorade? Okay. Just look. Hey, Megan. You're muted.
Sorry. Okay, so I just sent you four of the ones with phone numbers. I believe they are going to be participating by phone. So when you look for them to invite them to speak, you'll have to do it that way. And then this Angela Monroe, I've seen her on here before. It just says, "I was a shadow." I think that might be her email address. I've seen that come up before. So.
Okay.
We have received some other emails just giving opinions, not wanting to speak tonight so much, but wanting to share their opinion with the board. And the board's not going to be making any decisions tonight. I figured I'm going to send all of those out tomorrow as opposed to flooding you guys with them today. I know you're already getting a ton. So I'll organize those tomorrow and get them onto you separately so that you'll still hear everybody's comments, but it'll be a little less overwhelming.
Okay. Love your mates. We got Caitlin. Caitlin Morris.
Mosseri, I believe.
Okay. Marissa Sorensen.
Yep, and her phone number, I forgot to include it at first. A text down, I provide.
Yep. So 21248210.
9949.
Yep. Then Lindsay Actman. Okay, and then Karen.
And I spoke to Karen Kearns today. I know she was really not comfortable sending their child to school.
Yep.
Or where she's coming from.
Angela Monroe.
And that was, "I was a shadow." And then I was wondering if you wouldn't mind switching me to host and letting me screen share just so I can make it work.
Yeah. Okay, here you go.
Okay, so I am now the host. And so this looks different from what I'm used to. So then share screen. And I select what I want to share. Now tell me, do you see me as well on here or?
I see you in the little side, the little side. Yeah.
Just so I don't think that nobody's looking at me and do something.
I was on a call with one of my mentors last night and friends, and we were sort of going through the sort of Zoom genres of people, you know?
Yeah.
And that's the one who sort of forgets they're on screen, right?
Yes. Well, I'm going to go over to your little dots. The host again. So you should be the host again.
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's been a... It's been quite, I mean, I, you know, we just get read emails. I can't imagine what it's been like from your, from your end today.
Crazy. People are passionate, you know, and they feel very strongly. And about their kiddos.
Yep.
And about their jobs and about, you know, the politics. Everything else.
All right. All right, should I? I mean, there's 55 people here already.
Yeah, I'm gonna start capturing some of their... Scott's calling. Hi, Scott.
Sorry. Hi, Brenda. I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if I can get you out. There are so many people joining. I'm having a hard time here. Hi, Bob.
What's happening, Michael?
Nothing. How about you?
No, not too much. Not much. So you said there's 348 people that want to ask Amy some questions?
Hi, Darren.
112 want to ask Darren questions? Oh, my God.
112? That's it?
512, yeah.
Oh. All of this work.
Right?
Yeah.
I believe we may be live too, just so you know.
Okay. Hi, Nadine.
Hi, Bob. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, terrific. Because the last meeting, I had a little problem with the audio, so I'll go off mute and good, I'm in. So terrific. Good to see everybody. I'm glad I'm, I'm glad I'm working. Last, last time I wasn't working. Okay.
Hi, folks. Can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Very good. Thank you.
Hey, Scott. How are you?
Good. Hey, Mike. Lisa Eldridge is trying to get in as a participant, so I don't know. She's...
Thank you. Thank you. And Lisa.
Everyone hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to, I have my headphone in. I wanted to make sure.
Hey, I let this Brenda Bravo in because so many people... Okay, hold on.
Sorry folks, one more minute here. We have some, we've had some people that need to get in and we're making sure we can accommodate everyone. So just one moment. I think it looks like right now we're about 336.
Okay, sorry about that everyone. We had to, we had to re-up our, or we had to expand our, our membership to allow everyone in tonight. So be patient with us please. Thank you for your understanding. One second here and we'll get started.
I think I made it. You're in.
Did you open up the room to 500?
That's correct.
Okay, are we gonna have enough?
I think it looks like right now we're about 336.
Okay.
Okey dokey. Alright. Wait, John Paul. I was waiting for John Paul. Alright, you with us John Paul? Oh, there.
While we wait, I just want to thank you and Megan, Mike for, it's very stressful to be trying to start a meeting and have a technical issue like that. So thank you very much for your dedication and perseverance to get us to this place.
Thank you. Okay, thank you Joan. Jump all good? We're good? Okay, Megan, do we see everyone? Scott, do we have everyone with us? It looks like. Okey dokey. Alright. Welcome everyone. Thank you so much for your patience. As I said, we had to update our subscription to accommodate everyone this evening though. Thank you, thank you for your patience with us. So the Waterford School Board Committee of the whole virtual meeting is called the Order. As with all Board of Education meetings, the link for participation and materials are available on the district's website. We will welcome audience participation, participation following board discussion. If you would like to participate at that time, you will be asked to signify by using the raise hand feature on Zoom or by submitting your name and email address to be recognized to Megan Roberts at R O B E R M zero one at W S D M I dot org. If you would, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so welcome everyone. Before we begin tonight's committee of the whole meeting, I want to provide some context for tonight's meeting. I want to do this in part so that we, the board, the administration and viewers are clear about the task at hand. First, tonight is a regularly scheduled meeting, which we set way back in January. However, this is our first ever committee of the whole meeting. So we've recently agreed to revamp our meeting schedule, or excuse me, our meeting structure to better facilitate conversation. We'll not be taking any action tonight. To discussing and discussing the fall's plans. With that said, we have to vote to adopt a plan per Governor Whitmer's return to school plan. So we're gonna have to schedule a special meeting. We're gonna schedule it this evening so that we can vote on a proposed plan. So we'll be, we'll be doing that as we go throughout this evening. With that said, we've allotted two hours for our conversation this evening. We can certainly, if the board wishes to do so, extend that conversation. And in order to do so, we will have to make a motion and vote to extend our conversation. Secondly, and most obviously, we are here tonight, like every other district in Michigan, to discuss a fall plan in the context of COVID-19. And with that said, it's important to go over some context very briefly, just so we can bear this in mind as we have our discussion tonight. To begin, we're just gonna go over some facts here. To begin, as a nation, we're approaching 5 million COVID-19 cases and 160,000 deaths. As of this morning, the seven day average of COVID-19 diagnosis in Michigan is 648. And that's about the same average as we saw in mid to late April. There have also been 11,785 COVID cases and over 1,000 total deaths in Oakland County. And between our area codes of 48327, 48328, and 48329, there have been, as of today, nearly 500 total cases. So to regarding school openings, there are some important points to take note of. So again, just to, just to lay out the context and to unpack what some other folks are dealing with. We know that Israel closed their schools two weeks after reopening due to an uptick in COVID-19 cases, including one school with 130 positive cases. According to the CDC, a report about a recent outbreak at a Georgia summer camp, they suggest that the findings of SARS-CoV-2 spread efficiently among youth-centric, among a youth-centric overnight setting, resulting in a high attack rates among persons in all age, despite efforts by group officials to implement most recognized strategies to prevent transmission. Summarizing these trends, The Guardian has written, "The coronavirus may be easily transmitted in school and summer camp settings, more easily in school and summer camp settings than previously understood." Also according to NPR and Ipsos, a survey, 82% of K-12 teachers say are they are concerned about returning to in-person teaching this fall. And that the possibility of a teacher shortage is a real one. Finally, as of, and Superintendent Lindbergh can correct me, but as of yesterday, 20 of 28 districts in Oakland County were beginning this school year fully virtually and fully online. This is some context. With all of that said, we know that schools play a vital part in our community. We know that for so many families, the schools are the bedrock of their day-to-day lives. We know they're important. And all of us as students, teachers, administration, the board, we all wish we were back in school. However, in light of the information above, the question remains, can it be done safely? And that, that question itself is, is, is a wicked problem. It's, it's a problem that we can't test, we can't study, we can't go through trial and error. We don't even know if the solutions that are available to us solve the problem. So I provide that context because all which is to say the task ahead of us tonight is a, is a great one. At the same time, our new committee structure, we have a lot of people who are watching us this evening. We have an opportunity here to work together, to listen, to consider, to ask the right questions about how best to keep our students, families, teachers and staff safe. And to provide a robust education. And wherever our conversation goes this evening, and we go over the next week, week and a half, all of us here, I'm sure can agree that whatever we do, we're gonna do, we're gonna be a model of compassion and creativity and making sure that we follow the facts. So with that context, let's bear that in mind as we have our discussion tonight, but I'm gonna hand it off now to Superintendent Lindbergh.
Thank you, President Ristich.
Yep. Yeah, I need to, sorry Scott, need to do a roll call vote here.
Thank you.
Secretary Patricia?
I believe we're all here except for members halls. Am I correct?
Yep, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're gonna have our approval of the agenda. And seeing no changes are, our general, our agenda will be approved by consent. Megan, do we take a vote on that? Are we good?
No votes necessary, as long as there's no changes brought before us.
Thank you. Okay, thank you everyone. Now I'm gonna hand it over to Superintendent Lindbergh. Thank you.
Thank you, President Ristich. So I think Megan's gonna bring up our PowerPoint, which will guide our discussion tonight. And what we've done is from the plan that's just four or five pages long, we sent to the board last night and today. We want to take our viewers and the board through this plan and really highlight some of the key points. So I'm not gonna read word for word, but as we flip to the next page and kind of give you some of the expectations. And we're gonna go through this, this plan in somewhat some detail. So as President Ristich mentioned, we have an executive order which requires us to complete this COVID-19 preparedness and response plan, laying out how we will cope with the disease across the various phases of the Michigan Safe Start Plan. So very simply, in this state required plan, we will talk about what we will do in phases one, two and three. Phase four, there's a section on hygiene, a section on cleaning and cleanliness, a section on athletics, a section on screening, a section on testing. That is testing protocols from the return to school roadmap, a section on busing and student transportation, and then we finish up on, on what it looks like for us in phase five. So I want to just talk a little bit about the return to school roadmap that was put out by the governor's task force June 30th. And so we certainly have been working on it since then. Here's the time crunch that's happening right now, is that the districts have to submit this preparedness plan after it's approved by our Board of Education by August 15th. And then at that point, then we get approval and we send it on to the state treasurer or the superintendent of public education the following Monday, which is August 17th. So that's a little bit of why we are pushing this forward now. On the next slide, I want to talk a little bit about what we've been doing. So it's strongly recommended in the Michigan's Safe Schools roadmap. The Waterford School District formed the Pandemic Response and Preparedness Team to gather feedback from families, staff and school leaders about the experiences with remote learning through online surveys and our virtual conversations, the online learning that happened in the spring. We then revising the remote learning plan to incorporate all this feedback and input to improve our effectiveness. And then we are in the phase of sharing that remote plan with stakeholders. On the next slide, this is the team. This is the leadership team that's been working on this since we were given the roadmap on June 30th. So you can see those folks, they are all with us tonight, with the exception of Carly Stone and John Keglevich and Sid Tippett. They will be represented by other folks in their departments. So on the next slide, we've got a hand graphic that I wanted to point out to kind of our process and roadmap that we've been following in terms of getting this response. So if you would recall back in June, we did pretty involved parent and staff surveys, both in early part and latter part of June. We have continued meetings with the association leadership. We have continued meetings with teacher representatives and administrators, those representatives regarding instructional impacts. We have then, of course, been developing the plan using that information from the surveys, from the meetings, using the governor's roadmap, looking at the CDC guidelines and the recommendations for schools. And I want to let you know that we continue to adjust our plan based on the feedback from staff and parents. As I talked with some parents today and yesterday, as you know, we held a town hall a week ago Monday, and we were making some adjustments. And I want the board and the community to realize this is such a fluid situation. We want, and I know that it's important, for our students and our staff to be comfortable to come back to the school setting, come back to the buildings. So we've continued to listen, we've continued to make those adjustments. And that will help us arrive with, with where we are tonight and the recommendation that I will bring before you. On the next slide, basically talks about that we agree to make, that we agree to meet the recommendations, or excuse me, the requirements of the executive order. That what we will do with in-person instruction, our commitment to those with disabilities. That what we will do with in-person instruction, our commitment to those with disabilities. The district assures that we will provide equal access to alternative modes of instruction. I am so appreciative of Nadine and her team that she continues to work with our parents to make sure that their needs are met and we are providing equal access opportunities and options. On the fourth bullet, again, we'll be following the guidance from the United States Department of Education and taking that very, making that very important. On the last bullet, the district assures that it shall, to the extent practical and necessary, make individual determinations whether and to what extent common story, competency services may be needed for students with disabilities in light of the school closures. On the next slide, it goes through these phases. So again, I'm not going to read through all of this. Here's the basic piece that you need to know. Phase one, two, or three is required that we are shut down and it's online learning. We are currently in phase four. We've been in phase four. I think the governor talked that we may be moving to phase five. Probably six weeks ago, we know that that has not happened. Phase four, schools are allowed to open with very strict guidelines. And we have been working through the roadmap and we've been sending out communication to both our parents and our staff on how we are going to meet that. And I think we've done a pretty good job on that, but I'm going to share some concerns with you in just a moment. My recommendation tonight, and I'm going to share some information and we'll go through that. Given where we are at, given the fact that school officials are not health professionals, given the fact that our cases continue to stay high, where you know, it is a concern. I've, we've listened to the governor, we've listened to some of our leaders talk about the concern about opening our schools. We do know that it's very possible that the governor will move us back to phase three where it will close our schools and be only online. My best guess and the information we're getting from our lobbyists is that that may not happen until the end of the month. Well, our first day of school is August 31st, number one. Number two, we have a plan that we are required to have in place at the state level a week from Monday. Probably most importantly, we have to give our staff, our teachers, and our administrators time to prepare to bring our kids back. And that, so that is something that's pushing, pushing us forward and trying to make a decision. I think it's also important to note that as I'm working with superintendents across the county, that we know we're in a health crisis and all of us are sharing with our boards and our community that very clearly we have a lack of support from the Oakland County Health Department. I can tell you just late today, probably about five o'clock, we were all sent the information we have been asking for, for over a month. That is quite inappropriate to put it in the nicest way possible. What we are looking for, which I think is reasonable from the Health Department, are what are the metrics that we can follow that are safe for our students and safe for our staff to be back in school? We hear that in our community, our parents, our teachers are hearing that you can't have gatherings of more than 10 people now. You can look at any part of any school and there's gatherings of more than 10 people. We're hearing that you can't have gatherings of over 100 people. I can tell you, every school building has many more students than that. So we're going to, we would do our best to practice the social distancing. We implemented after the town hall and knowing that our parents and our staff had concerns that we would require our elementary kids to wear masks. That was not required as part of the roadmap in classrooms for elementary kids. So we've stepped up in doing that. But here's what we know. The difference maker in our schools are our dedicated staff, our teachers, our bus drivers, our principals, our secretaries, our support staff, all of these people. I know that it's my responsibility to take all of this information and to make sure that we have a self, or we have a very healthy, safety, safe-wise environment to bring our staff and students back. Given where we are at, given the numbers that continue to stay higher, they're not going down. Given the lack of direction from the Health Department, I would say given somewhat lack of direction from, from the the executive level in Lansing, I need to recommend to the board that we slow down the return to school and we look at doing the first card marking, that would be 10 weeks, it would take us through November 6th, that we would begin that with the remote instruction. And Lisa's going to talk to you about that, Lisa Eldridge, the Assistant Superintendent. That will look very different than it did in the spring and she will detail that out. In addition to remote, those kids that had signed up for face-to-face and right now as of Monday afternoon, that was about 61% of our students. We would also have the Waterford Virtual Academy, which we had 39% at that time. That number fluctuates a little bit as we continue to pick up those students who had not shared their choice with us. Our goal is simply, we know, I know as your superintendent, the best place for kids is in face-to-face instruction along with the choice that our parents and students would have with the Waterford Virtual Academy. We need to get there. We need to do it in a safe way. We need to do it where our staff feels safe, that they're not concerned that they need to take a leave to protect their health, the health of their families, the health of their kids. And we need to push on our Health Department and our legislative leaders to be clear and have a consistent message. I'm sure if you're watching the news, we're not getting a consistent message. More so, if we look at what's going on down south in New York and some of the other states that are opening up, we're finding cases are happening all over the schools. That requires us to put a lot of time, as we should, into contact tracing, deciding what classrooms we're going to shut down, what schools we're going to shut down. And of course, that causes a great bit of disruption. So as President Ristich mentioned, I'm in constant contact with our neighboring superintendents. I got off a Zoom call today with all of our county superintendents. I can tell you, we are all concerned, 28 counties about where we are at. The trend is, although we don't want to do this, the trend is clearly moving towards beginning instruction remotely. And that is not where we want to be. And I don't, I don't take that lightly. So just another piece to think about some of the medical professionals that a couple of our, me and my colleagues talked with this week. We will hear that this is one of the safest times to bring kids back that we've seen in the last few months. These are what medical professionals were telling us on Tuesday. We will also, we were also told that it's not a question of if COVID will happen in our buildings with our students and staff, it's a question of when. And in the COVID hits, perhaps our students who seem to be remarkably resilient, we have staff members that have health concerns, that are older. That's where the risk comes in. And as your superintendent, I have to be concerned about not only our almost 8,000 students, but our 1,500 staff members. They again, as I said, make the difference. And we are committed, I want to share with this board and with the community, we are committed to getting kids back. This is a once-in-a-hundred-year pandemic. We need to do it right. And we are prepared to go with every way the board decides tonight. But it is my recommendation is we'll talk about the options that we would begin the first card marking remotely with those students that were going to choose, that had chosen face-to-face. And then also with the other 39% or so on the Waterford Virtual Academy. Because that will continue, right? Those students may still have a concern. We're going to have a need for the Virtual Academy. But we're going to want to get those students that want to come back to school face-to-face back as soon as we can. And we'll continue to watch those numbers and the direction and see what's happening. You know, one, one staff member shared with me yesterday, you know, Scott, this is, this is an experiment with the safety of our staff and students, and I'm concerned about running this experiment too far before we know what we're getting into. Now, I want to assure you that Assistant Superintendent Lisa Eldridge, our Executive Director of Student Support Services, Nadine Malistan, and Darren Holly, our Director of Instructional Services and Technology, are going to talk to us about what does this look like if we're beginning remotely? What does the face-to-face look like when we transition to that, because we will at some point? And of course, talk to us about the Waterford Virtual Academy. So those things are very important. That's about the teaching and learning, and that's what we are about. So I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Eldridge. And certainly, we're going to have time for questions here at the end, but we want to provide you some of these details. Lisa?
Thank you very much. Good evening to the board and all the participants we have out there this evening. I'm going to be talking a little bit about the teaching and learning piece to this, which is one part of the plan that we are forwarding to the state for approval. And I want to start that by talking about some terms that we use when we're talking about this, so we're all on the same page and understand that. Thank you, Megan. So teaching and learning in the age of COVID-19, it is certainly not where we want to be. It's not what we want it to be. But it is what it is. And so we have to work with what were, the cards were dealt. There are some terms and one is in-person instruction. We know what that is, right? And we're going to talk a little bit more about what that will look like in this age. And then on the other hand, we have online learning and we use that kind of within our district as an umbrella term for two types of the learning that you can do online. You can choose to be part of the Waterford Virtual Academy, which we call virtual learning. Or you could be part of remote learning that is our daily schedule and we'll work through what that might look like as part of online learning. So those are the terms we wanted to talk about. So let's start with in-person instruction. As Scott said, at some point, we will return to in-person instruction, whether that's to start the year or whether it is to after things have calmed down and we've decided to return. And when it resumes, it will be a daily schedule for students. The secondary has worked hard and chosen to go with the block schedule. The reason for that is to limit exposure of students to staff on a daily basis, limit the different classes they're going to, and to limit passing time for students in the hallways. And so they would like to stick with that. And I think that's a great, a great decision. And they're going to be working with staff on that and making sure that everyone's on board and understands the parameters and we're going to be supporting them with professional development. And I think it's got a lot of potential. So we're kind of excited about that. Traditional instruction will be provided. Kids will be coming to school every day, but there will be some limitations on that. It's going to look very different, especially at an elementary classroom. As you know, we would normally gather kids on a carpet and, you know, read stories together and have group work. That's going to be not, not going to be happening. So students are going to be spending a lot more time in their seats and separated, obviously, as much as possible. Guided reading groups are normally anywhere from, you know, three to six students. And they're not going to be able to occur that way anymore. So they're going to take more time and we're going to have to modify that to one to two students who can be separated. There are safety measures outlined in the plan that Business and Operations will talk about later, because that was part of their, their facet of the plan. And we will be doing Lexia and Success Maker. Those are two programs that we used to use as an intervention. However, because all of the students were off in the spring, our grant funds have been allowed to use them for all students at the elementary. So that is, and those are individualized programs that will help students where they are, catch them up if they're having any gaps from where they were before. For online learning, again, have the Waterford Virtual Academy. And I know this is, this is a repeat for most of you. You've gotten this, parents have heard about it. The tenants of what we're talking about are not changed necessarily. So the Waterford Virtual Academy is online, using the Edgenuity platform as a base, but also providing our own teachers as support systems and to do some of the social emotional pieces and to check in with students and do reteaching as necessary. Edgenuity is not an easy program. It's certainly not with rigor. So we wanted to ensure that we had, you know, support for students in place, ready to go. The platform provides workbooks for the elementary students and it's a little bit different for them. It's a little more interactive. The, the WVA teachers will provide additional benchmarks as needed. If something's missing in Edgenuity, they'll add it on. What we won't do however, is change the core of Edgenuity because all of the courses as they are, are NCAA accredited, and we want to make sure to stick with that for students who are athletes. Learning will be assessed and graded. That's different from the spring. You know, in the spring, we were given very clear guidelines from the state about what we could and could not do, and we could not, we could not require certain things from students in terms of learning and our focus needed to be compassion. While our focus is still compassion, but it's also rigor. And now we need to make sure that students are catching up, that students are learning and moving forward in the benchmarks. So all learning will be assessed and graded. We're going to do professional development. We're going to post these positions once we know how much we need, how many we need and at what levels. And then we'll, we have already, we have PD set up and ready to go for them when they're ready. We've said that if student chooses Waterford Virtual Academy, at the semester, they can choose to come back if they're in secondary. At the marking period, they can choose to come back if they're in elementary. The reason for that is that the semester classes are in a semester block for the secondary. So we kind of need to move forward with that semester. And with pupil accounting rules, we need to follow that. In the elementary, we have a little more flexibility because elementary students are grading and upgraded on a marking period or evaluated on a marking period. So remote learning would be also an online form of a learning, but we would use it either in case of a shutdown if we started the year or potentially to start the year, given tonight's recommendation. We would be using Google Classroom. Teachers will all be trained in a common template. They'll run through their daily schedule. We will maintain the block schedule at the high school if we do this. And we'll again, work with teachers on what that will look like. Note, students will not be sitting in front of a screen for a double block of classes. That's not how we'll work it. We're going to change things up. We're going to have them doing different activities. We'll make sure that there's more to it than that. Encore classes at the elementary electives, they'll all be provided as, as chosen by our students. It will be much more traditional and much more rigorous again than it was in the spring because we are back to honest benchmarks and moving forward. Learning again will be assessed, assessed and graded. And again, we will still offer Lexia and Success Maker through those programs as well. Thanks, Megan. So as Superintendent Lindbergh stated, after reviewing the educational choice submissions, receiving feedback from families and from staff, the superintendent is proposing that we open the school year 100% online for the first marking period through November 6th. Teachers again would participate in extensive professional development. Everything will be set up the same way. We would have a pre-start-of-the-year pickup day where students could come and pick up books, materials, supplies that they might need to be doing the work at home, and devices when those have been worked out through the technology department so that they will have everything they need to do their work at home online. So I know one of the questions that has been out there has been, if I chose the WVA and we start work school remotely and I want my student to be with a teacher all day long, can I change? The answer to that is yes. We are going to give a deadline date because we do have to live within some deadlines with Edgenuity. Elementary is easier because you can change at that marking period if you, if things, if we decide we're not going back and you want them online. Or if you decide, if we decide we are staying online and you're comfortable with that, you could switch at the marking period. Secondary must still commit to a semester. So for example, if I have said, I'd like to move my child from Waterford Virtual Academy to remote learning, you, secondary parents would need to be clear on the fact you, secondary parents, would need to be clear on the fact that if on November 9th we come back to school, they have to come back to school with us. So if they are certain they did not want that to happen, then stick with WVA and be off for the semester. You can switch at the semester, but you have to commit for a semester at a time. So academic assessments are also part of the plan. And we know that K-8, we use NWEA. 912, we also use PSAT and SAT and all of those things, which are still scheduled for the fall. So NWEA has now moved to a web-based platform, so it can be taken in the home. So if we start the year virtually, or I'm sorry, online, if we start the year online, we would have students do that in the context of their home, and then we would be able to move those or compare those scores with their winter scores from the year before. Kindergarten, remember, they start that MKEO this year, the Michigan Assessment. That has not been halted. That is still going on. And so that's going to be their progress monitor to start the year. And then, at the high school level, we'll use the PSAT, and we will also use pre-tests, last year's final assessments where appropriate, and any other common assessments that high school students or teachers may find beneficial to help them. So we're going to be watching our students very carefully. We want to monitor their progress very carefully. Edgenuity, if students are in the Virtual Academy, have built-in pre-tests. So we're all set with that. And they kind of, those are adaptable programs. And so they start where a student is and keep moving them forward. So we're all set with our assessments. We feel very confident that we'll be able to work with students, bring them from where they are back to where they need to be, if they've fallen a little bit, or moving forward as appropriate. So we're pretty confident with that. And we're very grateful that NWEA has made that accommodation because I know districts across the country are going to be using that. A mandated piece, but it's also a piece that we would be doing regardless, is the social and emotional assessments and monitoring. We're going to start the year. Obviously, the state has mandated this for students, but we're going to start the year working with our teachers as well because I think it's really important for us to remember as a team that we have staff who have lost members of their family and friends. We have people who have suffered trauma through this, and they need to be in their best, healthy state to work with our kids and help them through their trauma. So we're going to start the year doing some activities with our staff and making sure we're all in a good place as well. And then we're going to do screeners for all of our students. We have a social and emotional learning return to school group. It's being led by two of our administrators, Shelley Worthman and Anne Cruz, and they're working with social workers. These are two administrators who have long been very engaged and excited about social-emotional learning and done a lot of good work with it. And so they've been working with a team and with Oakland Schools, selecting a screener to use. And then we've got a team of social workers, our behavior interventionists, counselors, anybody who can be on board with us to help talk to students and see how they're doing and just check in with them and monitor how their families are doing. And if anyone's in need of assistance, we can refer them to the appropriate resources in our community to get them the help they need. Teachers are going to participate in training regarding this in August and again in November because we're going to maintain that check-in throughout the year. And I'm going to take any questions you might have about any of this before I turn it over to Nadine Mylistan, who's going to talk about our special education students.
College, do we have any questions for Lisa? Joan?
I just wanted to ask if, relative to the training, I don't know how fast we can put that in place. My concern would be all of the support that will be needed to transition to a rigorous and robust online learning environment and to ensure that we're supporting our staff members in that regard.
That's a great question. Thanks, Joan. Actually, in terms of the planning for PD, it's pretty much done. We know what teachers are going to need. Remember, they've been using this program for a long time, all spring long. So we kind of worked out a lot of the glitches last year, and now we've got some really specific defined PD where we know we were missing things. We have the survey from staff to say, this is what we needed. We needed more of this, and we needed more of that for online learning. And so we've got the PD days coming in August, and we've got a plethora of activities and plans for them. And we also have people who have been training very hard to be the experts to go to for help. And we will also maintain our PLC times throughout the year. So once a week, those teachers will have the opportunity to meet together and to say, here's what's working for me, here's what's not, here's what I need more training on. And we'll continue to offer that training throughout the school year.
Great. Thank you so much.
I have a brief question, if I may. With regard to the social-emotional piece and the social workers, counselors, how would they meet with the students that would need them? Do they set up appointments, or how is that set up?
Well, it depends on the counselor, social worker, whomever. We have to work through the parent, obviously. But some have been meeting with kids because we were doing a lot of this in the spring, too. Some met in small groups if the parents were comfortable with that. Some met one-on-one. If we do get that, usually the parent's present. Sometimes it's an activity they do whole group because it's something that everybody can benefit from. So it depends on the need. It depends on the topic, and it depends on the parent's engagement with that.
And then the Virtual Academy versus the online learning that they'd be doing. With the online learning, then, so could you just kind of briefly, real quick, go through a day, like at an elementary level? Because that's probably would be the most challenging.
I can go through what I perceive it would look like. I can't guarantee that every teacher wants to do everything the same way, but we are going to have a daily schedule, and it's going to be a day of school. And so I'm the teacher, and I start my day at the regular time, and I do my morning meeting, and we do a circle for an SEL activity. And we have some conversation, and we work together. And I might launch into a mini lesson, and then I may send them off to do some work individually. I can divide them into groups. I can have them do individual work. I can be participating. I can say, I'd like you to go and spend 20 minutes working on Success Maker now. Now, the really nice thing about this, and these have just started to arrive in buildings at the elementary, is we have our math program, remember? So students have their math books now to work on. It's not all being created by teacher materials. And so those will be part of what they pick up in the beginning of the year. And teachers may say, here's the lesson. They may present a lesson. They may do some discussion about it, and then they may send them off to do their work. So they're not going to be sitting in front of a screen for that entire time. There are going to be varied activities that they will be doing. And then their encore classes will occur as normal. And so those teachers will take over for a while and do something else with the students and garner their attention for a while. So it's going to be very interactive, but it is going to be a day of learning.
And there will be extracurricular activities, correct? Like the phys ed, was that something that they could do?
That's the encore classes, and yes, those would be. They would be engaging in those as well.
Lisa, I've had a lot of people, obviously in high school, have asked about AP classes. How is that going to work? I assume we're still offering AP classes, and how will that work?
We do offer AP classes. Those would be scheduled. So are you asking if we're in person?
Well, no, starting off, the online.
If we're remote, and students are scheduled into those classes, teachers will teach them. It's a college board curriculum, so they'll teach that curriculum online, and they'll do it on a block schedule. So interestingly, depending on the AP class, a lot of the comments we used to get was, I don't have enough time in a class period for my AP kids. At one time, they wanted to do AC for AP kids because they needed more time. So this might be a nice thing for them to do a block. We'll have to see how it goes, but we will definitely be offering AP classes. You can also take AP classes through the WVA. Or another option we have for parents is dual enrollment, and that is always an option for them.
Okay, and then as far as the secondary schedule, it will be just like your regular school day. Monday through Friday, you get up and you log on at 7:05, and you have your first hour or second hour, I mean, your block, and you're there until 2:33 o'clock, Monday through Friday.
But same setup where we wouldn't want teachers talking to students or talking at students for a block of time. So there will be varied activities and a lot of training on that. And so it will be more engaging than you might think. We've got really good teachers who are really good at this kind of thing. And they don't want to sit and talk to students for an hour and 10 minutes. They're going to change it up, and they're going to do some really creative things.
Perfect. And last thing, I'm sorry. As far as devices, laptops, I know we purchase a lot. How are we doing with that as far as being able to distribute those to the families that need them? Or is that a Darren question?
You know what? Darren actually has part of the presentation later, so I want to step in his shoes.
That's fine. Because I was starting to say it, I thought maybe I should have waited for Darren on that one.
He's got a whole slide about it. So I'm going to let him explain that.
Good deal.
Other questions for Lisa? Lisa, who do we have?
Nadine Mylistan is going to be next, talk about students with disabilities.
Well, good evening, Board of Education members and members in the audience. I'm going to spend a few minutes and speak with you about each of the learning formats that are under consideration. So first and foremost, our staff will be assessing our students at the beginning of the year in taking a look at where they were last spring, where they left in June, and then where they're coming back on August 31st. And some of our IEPs may need to be adjusted based upon student needs. You know, our staff have not seen our students and are going to be anxious to see again where they're at and then what they need to do to support them. Our parents that have enrolled their children, their students in that Virtual Academy, they're going to be contacted by a special education, caseload teacher, teacher consultant, or their teacher just to make sure that they understand what services and supports are going to be available to them. And so just know that when those folks come back, they come back a little bit later in August. So we'll give them some time to get their lists. We'll give them some time to reach out to you and just know that they'll be doing that as soon as they get back and their feet are on the ground so that they can get in touch with you regarding your students. Regardless of the format that we're in, the accommodations that have been outlined in IEPs will be implemented for students that are participating in virtual, in-person, and/or remote. Those IEPs are living, breathing documents, and it's very, very important to make sure that our students that have those get their accommodations so that they can experience success in their academic, their social-emotional needs, all of the things that are outlined in those IEPs. We know that services and supports for students, again, are very individualized. No two IEPs look alike. And so it may be that IEPs may need to be reconvened just so that, again, we have everything mapped out so that you, as parents, have complete confidence that, again, where your student is being met, whether it's in that remote, whether it's in that virtual or in-person, that those supports are in place for them. Assistant Superintendent Eldridge has already spoken about our school social workers, but you know that they also, we share our school's social workers across the entire district, and so those are our liaisons. They are the ones that are going to be working with families and outside agencies to make sure that any kind of mental health concerns are addressed, appropriate referrals are submitted. And they're going to work with you to make sure that if you have any concerns regarding any of the mental health supports that you feel need to be checked into, that they're going to be available to do so. They've always done that. They're not going to stop doing it, and they will continually work with you as parents. Our paraprofessionals, we need them more than ever. We know that they provided great assistance to our students when we were in a remote learning situation last spring. They're coming back again. So we will use them in more robust ways to provide extensions to lessons and classroom support and making sure, again, they do anything and everything they can to support the students. Again, whether they are in a remote or whether they're in person, we desperately, desperately need our parare educators, and they will be working side by side with our teachers and our students. And we know, of course, this is a very, very unique time for all of us, for you as parents, for our educational staff, our ancillary staff, for all of us, Board of Education members, all staff members within a school community. And we will make good faith efforts in every way we possibly can to ensure that your students are making progress on their goals and objectives. And so just know that everything, and all things possible, will take place to make sure that we're doing everything possible to make sure that your student is in the best possible place, working as hard as they possibly can with their teacher and with all of their ancillary service providers. And so, again, we're in this with you, and we will make sure that no stones are left unturned to do all that we can possibly do under these conditions to meet the needs of your students. Any questions at this point? Good?
I actually have a question. And not just for you, Nadine, but for Lisa as well. Where are the teachers going to be working from home or will they be working from the classrooms? That's a big question from the community.
You know what, Julie? That is a great question. We've had a lot of discussion on that, and it's something that we're continuing to work with our union about. We need to work together to address how that would look like and what parameters we need to put in place. And at what point? I think a lot of it depends on where we are. If we are in a stage where the governor says everyone needs to stay home, then it may look a little different than it might look if we are remaining in Phase 4 for a while. But that is definitely a conversation we need to have with our union, and they know that, and we've been talking all along. So we have plans to do that next week pending your approval.
The one thing I would add to that is I know that our teachers want to do the very best job possible. So wherever that's happening, whether they're in their classroom, which is the preferred way to go, or they're able to do the work from home. As Lisa said, we're going to be working with the union to set up those standards, those guidelines, and those things that have to be met. I think there would be some thinking, hey, some of those things that happened in the spring probably were not, you know, the best way to go. But I will say that everyone did the best they could in the spring. But again, what we've been talking about is this has to be different. It will look different, and that's just the expectation. But as Lisa said, we're going to work together with Mary Crete, Lori Tunic, the MEA, and the teachers to find what's the best expectation so everyone's on the same page, all of our administrators. And so we're all in agreement on what's expected.
Other questions for Nadine?
Thank you.
I believe we're on to Darren Hawley, am I right? Darren, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and good evening. So whether we are in in-person learning, whether we're remote learning, or whether we are virtual learning, technology is going to be a key part to that because even if we start in-person, there's a good chance, if something happens, but it's when, where we could be shifting to remote learning for everyone. So technology is going to be a key component for that. So recognizing that, I mean, we distributed devices, surveyed parents early in the spring as a result of the shutdown. And we've resurveyed them again to make sure that we are accommodating everybody that needs a device. And we ask people to only ask for what they need. And I do believe that we got a good representation of people that did that. We use the CARES Act funding to purchase devices to ensure that every student that needs a device has a device. Right now, so as a result of that, we purchased a total, including the spring, and in the summer, we purchased a total of 2,850 devices. We issued 600 in the spring and summer. And then from the most recent survey... And then from the most recent survey, for the start of the new year, we have 100 or 1,851 new requests. And 187 of those folks requested a need for internet service, which is, which for, for those families, we will provide a hotspot that's directly tied to the device that we issue so that we, we know that it's going to have the internet service. It's not going to be internet service for the home. It'll be an internet service for that device. As I believe Mr. Piggott had asked about, do we have all of our devices yet? Not quite, but we've been in daily communication with the vendor that we purchased them. And actually, we got some good news today about them being shipped out. So we expect to take possession of them fairly soon. And my folks, my tech staff has been great through this, supporting parents and, and students that have issues. But as soon as we take possession of those, we're going to get them set up. And we have a distribution plan ready to roll out. But we're waiting to coordinate the days with the pickups of other materials so that we don't have people making several trips.
Any questions for Mr. Hawley?
I have a question if I could ask. It's been a common one that's, that's come up quite a bit and it's not necessarily related to Mr. Hawley. But do we have any plan or have we thought of any kind of like childcare program? I know Avondale School District is doing something. They're utilizing one of their 700-person buildings for parents. And this is a common question that I'm getting. I received so many questions today that I couldn't keep up. But a common question the parents are getting, you have two-person working households. And Avondale, I know, is providing a solution to that. They're allowing a certain amount of students in a daycare center. Is that something we've looked at or could look at or think of, or is that even safe? But, you know, I see that Avondale is doing it. And it is a, even something that I, I had a conversation with my wife this morning. And, you know, I'm going to have to go to my employer and talk to them about some kind of work from home plan because right now I'm, I'm in office four days a week and my wife has to do her job. And we have a first grader. So I, I know that there are a lot of parents that are in a similar situation. So have we thought, or is there any thought to, to some solution or some alleviation of that issue for parents?
Actually, John Paul, yes, we have, and we're working on that. We know that childcare will be open. We're trying to work on a method by which those kids could, to some extent, work throughout their school day as well. And so we are working with childcare to develop that. But childcare, we will have open childcare during this time.
Thank you, Lisa.
Other questions?
Can I jump in there, Mike? Can I jump in there for Darren?
Yeah, please.
So Darren, just, so we purchased 2,850 laptops. We issued 600 in the spring and summer. So leaving us with 2,250, I'm assuming, 1,851 new requests. So that's, you know, roughly 400 we have access, I'm assuming from the numbers. If that's true, and if all of a sudden with now, the possibility that we do go online fully virtual, you know, for everybody to start, are we able to find more if, you know, all of a sudden there's an uptick of people requesting these devices? Or are they, I, I mean, where are we at for that if all of a sudden now we get 800 people calling saying, hey, I was planning on going online or face-to-face with my kids, but now that we're home again, I need a device? Are we able to get more quickly?
Well, that's a great question. To first answer your question, do we have 400 extra? The 1,851 new requests are, not 100% of people responded to that survey. With the folks that are left, we are still within the window of being able to accommodate all the requests that have come in. To answer your question, if we get more requests than we have devices, it, it is going to be tricky getting additional new devices. Everybody's competing for the same devices. I, I know I mentioned Rochester is in kind of a pickle right now with. In that situation, but we do have a contingency plan. We do have some devices in our buildings that if need be, it's not our greatest solution, but we would recoup some of those devices and prepare them to send home.
If I can interject to remember too, Bob, that when we originally talked about this, we were asking families, even if we were going back, if they had a device. So we were, we were surveying them about what they already had. So those projections were based on all of our students basically having something to work with.
Yeah, that, and that was back in March, right? Early on.
And then again, when we did the twice now, we got confirmation of that. Because remember, we now know that we need something for every student. So if I have two kids and I have one device, then the district will help provide you one. So we have, we have better information than we had then. And we had hoped to provide one for every student who doesn't have one already. So those projections are based on that.
Yep. And before, as you remember, we provided, to get us through the spring, we provided one device per family, which, you know, if a family had two or three kids, that was how they remained in contact with the, with the teacher. But the, this is going to be much more rigorous. They are going to need an individual device. And, and when we sent that survey out, we did communicate that, you know, this, you know, we explained it that exactly that same way, that this is, it's going to require an individual device. Should we move to whether they choose remote or virtual learning or whether we move to remote learning at any given time?
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Other questions? Do we have, Lisa or Scott, do we have other presenters? Yep, okay. Thank you. Okay, Amy, Jim?
Thank you. Okay, so we do still have to have a plan, even if out of the 10 weeks we do come back and we are in Phase Four. So what we're going to talk about in these slides here is part of the plan. And so that is for, depending on which way we go, and you've already heard the recommendation from Superintendent Lindberg, that if we were still in Phase Four, these would be what we are looking for in the following areas. So first, we're going to talk about face coverings. I think all of us understand that all of our staff and students, K through 12, will wear face coverings throughout the day. As Lisa said, this requirement was only six through 12. We did expand it, including K through five. So those face coverings will be worn throughout the day, except during mealtimes and unless they cannot be medically tolerated. As I think Lisa already said also too, when we are in, in-person instruction, K through five will look a little bit different. Those K through five students will be kept with their class. Unless they are moving to the cafeteria, they will have to wear, well, they will have to wear face coverings all day long. But they will still be kept with that class and all of their specials or encore classes will come to them, with the exception of PE. And PE would, if, if, depending on the weather, would be able to be held outside and/or the gymnasium is large enough that we could allow for some social distancing. In the secondary schools, individuals will be wearing face coverings the entire day. And we will, where we can, social distance, but that will look different in the secondary schools. Students will eat with their classroom or with their classes in the cafeteria for, for elementary. So they will be social distanced between class, but they will eat with their class just like throughout the day, they will stay with their class. Lunch periods will be adjusted to accommodate so that there's enough social, there's enough distance between those classes. At the secondaries, there will be additional areas that will be used to accommodate. The food service program is under the Department of Health at the Oakland County Health Department. And so they do fall under the same guidelines as restaurants. So we have looked at all of the spaces and their square footage and what the capacity would be, and they would have to be at 50% capacity. So there are other areas, again, like I said, in the secondary settings where there would be use besides the cafeteria. So again, they would wear face coverings down to the cafeteria. They would wear face coverings in line. And then they would only take them off when they were sitting at the table and eating. Okay, Megan, you can go to the next section, which is hygiene. Obviously, a lot of our classrooms do have sinks in them. All sinks will be checked to ensure that they're proper, they're operating properly. All supplies will be checked daily and restocked as needed. So that's those paper towels, tissues, so, you know, trash receptacles. There will be hand washing signage in all of the restrooms, along with prevent the spread signage, which will be posted in the building corridors. So it'll talk about things like wearing your mask and washing your hands and hand sanitizer. Hand sanitizer will be provided in classrooms and throughout building corridors. And what, what that means throughout building corridors is hand sanitizing stations. So those will be hand sanitizers that, you know, I'm sure you've all seen are like mounted on either the wall or on a stand. And they will be strategically placed throughout those building corridors. Hand sanitizer will again be provided on all school buses. So students, when they enter the bus, will be required to get hand sanitizer and then continue on to their assigned seat on the bus. Teachers and all staff will contact the office if any supplies run out during the school day. Custodians will again, you know, do as much as they can to make sure that adequate supplies and the hand washing stations and all of those things are monitored and refilled throughout the day. Staff will be providing the students some instruction on hygiene and COVID-19 precautions. So when, and we do come back to in-person instruction, that will be taking place in, you know, that first week of coming back to in-person instruction. And Jim is going to talk to the next point about cleaning.
Thanks, Amy, and good evening, everybody. So obviously, cleaning is a, is a key part of safely returning everybody back when we come back for in, in-school instruction. So first of all, obviously, the cleaning protocols will be followed as required in the Michigan Schools Return to School Roadmap. An inventory will be related to all cleaning supplies. As you can imagine, just kind of like as mentioned in other areas, the, the, these, the, the demand on, on cleaning supplies, anything alcohol-related is, is in great demand right now. We've, you know, we, we've kind of procured cleaning supplies since really April. When this all went down, you know, we recognized that we were in a kind of a different level here. So we, we have procured, you know, our cleaners and disinfectants and we've got a pretty good stock of that going. Throughout the school day, custodians will disinfect all frequently touched surfaces. So that would include, you know, hand, door handles, handrails, restrooms. We'll, we'll have to adjust our schedules accordingly to, to make sure that that cleaning gets done during the day. At night, we move into a more of a traditional custodial schedule. We've been having frequent meetings with our custodials provider, Dan Burr. And we're having, again, a lot of discussion about our schedules and what we can do to make sure that the appropriate level of cleaning gets done. In the event of a, of a positive COVID case, you know, as, as we've shared with the community, you know, we would shut the buildings down and assess the level of closure. But while, while that's being evaluated, we have disinfectant, fogging sprayers, electrostatic sprayers that our crews will go in and for sure hit the, the affected areas. All secondary classrooms will be supplied with EPA-approved alcohol disinfecting wipes to do the cleaning that's required in the classrooms. Libraries, computer labs, and, and hands-on classrooms will be provided with clean supplies to ensure that those required clean requirements are met. And then obviously, we're going to provide our staff with the appropriate PPE along with wearing their, their face coverings when performing cleaning activities. And, and the next slide would be student transportation. So obviously, if, when we come back to school, student transportation will be a component of that. As required, you know, face coverings must be worn by all students, staff, drivers. Anybody who's on a bus needs to wear a face covering, so, so that will be a requirement. Obviously, unless you have a medical verified reason, of course, just like in all other areas. We're going to add signage to the bus just to remind everybody. You know, face cover decals are going to be ordered and we're going to post those. As was mentioned, we are required to have hand sanitizers on all the buses. So we, we're putting dispensers, we're going to install dispensers on all the buses. And as Amy mentioned, students will be required to sanitize their, their hands before they enter. Buses will be cleaned and disinfected between route assignments. So after morning runs, after the PM runs, and if a driver has a midday assignment, they will come in and clean and disinfect their, their buses to, to ensure cleaning throughout the day. Weather permitting, doors and windows will be kept open. Obviously, that with that airflow, that, that helps kind of dissipate some of the cleaning that's going on and helps the drying process. Students will be assigned a seat to assist with tracking and supervision. Obviously, we want to, you know, make sure that we are supervising students properly. And, you know, to have that consistency of where they're sitting is very important to help, to help do that. No field trips or class trips will be allowed in Phase Four or Five. And then finally, we will make sure that any of our contractors that we utilize to help supplement some of our special needs transportation will review with them the school roadmap and make sure that they have everything in place to be compliant with, with the requirements. So with that, is there any questions in any of those areas?
Jim, as far as the buildings go, when we are back in-person, I, I know through the, a school day, the doors are locked, people can't get in. But once school is over, I, I think the doors, I believe, are usually unlocked and people can kind of come and go, extracurricular activities and all that. Are they going to be locked continually or all of a sudden are the doors going to be unlocked and it's a free-for-all come and go? How's that going to work?
No, we're going to be much more restrictive about who enters the building. We're, we're going to have to be. I, I anticipate that we will keep it close. I, I don't know what level of after-school activity we're going to come back to. You know, we still have another piece that, and that Amy's going to talk about in regard to athletics. Waiting for guidance from the MHSAA, so it is definitely going to look different than, than normal.
Jim, Amy, I'm wondering, we've been working, as you know, closely with Darren and Lisa on procuring devices for our students, and we know that there's, they're, they're tough to come by. I imagine there's something similar when it comes to PPE, to the necessary cleaning supplies. Or maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but what, what does that look like from your end? And just trying to procure the, the materials?
We've been, we've been procuring materials for some time now. So we do have a list of all of the materials that we've been procuring, from adult masks to, to pediatric-sized masks, so size masks for children, clear masks for different areas of possibly speech, different areas like that. Face shields, we were lucky enough, and Jim, you can speak up here. We were lucky enough to get some face shields donated, about 1,600 of them. And we want to put a shout out to Sam Majers, who's our food service director that procured, procured those for us. We also have been procuring N95 masks or KN95 masks. Where we can get those, those are, as you know, in Where we can get those, those are um, as you know, in um, short supply because they are being um, first to hospitals and medical facilities. Um, we also have been cur- procuring gloves. Um, obviously, hand sanitizer, as you've heard us talk about. Um, we also are going to be talking a little bit later in this um, meeting about um, wipes. Um, they're uh, 70% alcohol-based wipes um, for cleaning. Um, and we um, have also purchased um, and procured uh, thermometers. So um, thermometers have been, been used throughout athletics um, during this time. Um, and will also be used in um, sick rooms or um, as the plan says, quarantine rooms when we do come back um, in-person. And Jim, you can pipe in there, too.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree with everything that you said. I mean, uh, and, and yes, but you know, getting those face shields donated to us is huge, you know, that's 1,600 pieces. Those typically run anywhere from three to $5. Um, and, and you know, we're, we're getting inundated every day with uh, folks who claim that they have, you know, PPE and, and, and products and things like that. But I got to tell you, you know, uh, a lot of fly-by-night operations out there. So we're being very careful to try to not only get, you know, the best price that we can, but get it, get them from a reliable source, you know, that, you know, we, we don't want to order a large quantity of something. And then um, if it comes and it's a sub-quality product, or it, it just never comes at all. But you know, certain things like, you know, uh, one of the, the hardest things to get right now is gloves, uh, believe it or not. Uh, Nitro Glove, you know, for cleaning is, is in, in uh, short supply, so. Um, and, and then obviously, you know, KN95s and 95s were just released, you know, from uh, if, for the longest time, it was only the medical community that could get those. So now they're starting to release some of those, you know, in, into the general pop, population. And um, we're getting little bits and pieces, but we're, we're grabbing it when we can. So um, I, I feel pretty good about, you know, like I said, we've been proactive about uh, trying to bring this stuff on. Um, but you know, uh, everybody's cooperation, um, you know, is, is helpful to, to help us mitigate, uh, you know, some of the, the usage of this, so. Um, you know, we're hoping to get that cooperation when, when we, when we come back in class, but we do have supplies ready to go.
And we are also working with Oakland Schools and their um, print shop um, for um, decals. Um, so um, you know, decals that's, you know, for, help us prevent the spread. Um, social distancing floor decals, um, hand washing decals, so that we can put those in all of our restrooms. Along with um, face covering required decals, you know, after the governor um, required face coverings.
Thank you.
I have a question. I know everybody knows this is going to come out of my mouth. What happens when kids walk into high school and say, "My mom says that I don't have to wear a mask and I'm not wearing one." Do we have to change the code of conduct? Do they have to sign a waiver if we go in-person? What, what is the penalty for not wearing one if you can wear one?
Do you want me to take that, Amy?
I was going to say, we, we are working through that and Lisa's been going, um, talking to principals and regarding that.
Um, and it is clear through the roadmap that we do have the authority to implement the code of conduct, which would be in subordination. Um, we can consider masks part of our dress code. Now, that being said, know that if a doctor writes a note for a child.
Right.
We respect that, and that is.
Right.
A exemption for us, but we need that doctor's note on file. Ultimately, students will be sent home without a mask because it is a policy, it is a procedure that we are following based on the policies outlined for us in the roadmap. And um, it's not, it's not an option. It, it is a must-have at this point.
And again, we are requesting that our staff and our students bring um, face masks with them. But we do have supplies for emergencies, for um, you know, if the, if the strap breaks. Um, if it gets dirty, if it gets, you know, thrown on the floor, um, if you just forget. Um, so we do have um, supply for that, but we are asking that our um, that our staff and our students help us out in that area and bring their own cloth, um, face covering and/or the, you know, the uh, one, the medical grade, well, the basic medical grade paper um, mask, surgical mask.
Um, and if I can, Amy, just because I know you touched on secondary. Remember, I think we mentioned in the last meeting that in elementary, we're gonna um, be purchasing lanyards um, for students. They're very inexpensive, but you know, those elementary students, they go to, they go to eat their lunch, they take their mask off, where do they put it?
Put it.
Likely to use it, it'll end up the floor, they'll connect it, it'll be connected right to their lanyard. And uh, shout out to Sarah Yates, who's in the audience right now, because that was her idea when I, one of our meetings, so thank you, Sarah.
Can I elaborate just a little bit? What happens if they come, they don't have a doctor's note, they refuse to wear a mask, and nobody comes to pick them up? Where do we put them?
Um, you know what, honestly, Julie, if a parent refuses to pick up a child, that has happened in my career, but it has been extremely rare. Um, then we may have to involve the authorities because that, we've asked them to come and pick up their child and they haven't. And I'm not saying it's happened here in Waterford, but in my career, we have had.
You've had sick kids that the parent will say, "I'm off work in two hours, I'll be there." I've seen them in the office at Riverside, laying all over the chairs and, and whatever. And I just think that if we're going to open, I just want to make sure none of these shenanigans happen for any of these kids or our teachers.
Well, from my perspective, this is a mandate from um, the roadmap. And we will be following the mandate, so we will be enforcing this cer- strictly.
Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, other questions here? Before we move on, I believe, to Susan.
Oh, I have one more slide.
Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Bob.
No, well, I was going to go back to Lisa, I think, so do you want to do your slide? It was just, and maybe Lisa brought it up. Um, and if she did already say it, I apologize that I missed it. But as far as attendance, taking attendance for kids, high school, elementary, is that going to be something we're doing? And, and just like, again, a normal school day, and if you miss four or five days, I mean, again, make it as normal as we can.
Yep, no, actually, um, that's a great question, Bob. It is a normal school day, and so we do take attendance. But there are some additional parameters that we have to meet with online learning, and we'll be working with our teachers on that. That involves two-way communication with the student and/or the parent throughout the course of a week. It can be, um, that can be through assignments or other ways. And so we're working on that, but also, the key is, yes, we will be taking attendance in classes. And Becky Staub, our Torrance Officer, will be um, or Coordinator, will be working with us. If students are not showing up to class, again, we've got the five um, absence mark, they get a letter, the 10 absence mark, there's another process step. We will maintain that because we are running school. It is very different and the requirements are very different than they were in the spring. So that is, kids need to be in school, and if they're not, we need to find out where they are and why they're not.
And, and if for some reason, because so many of us are online now, and, and not only we're going to be learning online, but people are still working online. If for some reason, your internet goes out, and I know mine has in the last four months, various times, you know, for a 10 minutes here, an hour here, whatever. Um, those would be excused, obviously, right? I mean, we're not going to penalize it.
You know, and be a text to the teacher, or, or just say, "Hey, my internet went out."
Yeah.
Um, but of course, um, if it happens all the time, then we need to check what's going on with your internet connection and see if we need to uh, step in there. But um, yes, if, for an occasional thing like that, that would be an excuse.
Good deal, thanks.
Um, if I could, uh, Lisa, just to build on that, um, how do we regulate if the student is actually present? Uh, are we requiring the camera to be on, or how do we know they don't put a picture up and leave and?
Um, well, I mean, if they put a picture up, we're going to talk to them at some point. Their names are, we have a list of everyone in the Google Classroom at a time. Um, and so we also have our recording mechanisms that we use for that. Um, you know, I, as, as student could potentially put a picture up, but a teacher, teachers are keyed into stuff like that. They know if students engaging in conversation and participating and um, asking questions and talking about it. Um, it's kind of like when we are in class and we have students that do fall asleep, you know, how we handle that? Where do we take that? It's, you know, a quick, um, a quick email, "Where are you?", or a phone call, "Where are you?", or just, you know, if they are not responding, then they're not in class, and we know that, and we tend, take attendance accordingly.
Right, so I, I think that, yeah, that was my thing, is that they don't put like their profile picture, and you know how we can put our profile picture and then?
They are, when they're in class, they're in class with us.
Okay, perfect, so there'll, there'll be that part.
And they should be actively participating in any discussions, so.
Thank you.
I have one more question. I think it's for Jim. Um, I know that kids, like, what is the bathroom policy? Like, I know that they leave class and go to the bathroom all the time, so if they're in and out of the bathrooms all day, how are we keeping those clean? Do we have more staff there? I mean, how, how does that look?
Uh, well, uh, we'll be adding a midday cleaning, as, as was mentioned, we'll be cleaning throughout the day. So the restrooms, uh, will receive a midday cleaning in addition to the, to the, that's, that's little, uh, that, that's more than what we normally do now. So the, the restrooms will be cleaned throughout the day also.
Is that, is that our staff that will be cleaning them, or Dan Burr?
Both.
Okay, just only because I know that most of our staff lives in the district and they care a lot about our kids and always have gone the extra mile, so that's, that's a big one for me. Okay.
Okay, Amy, did you want to take up your last slide? Yep.
Sure, okay, so um, athletics. Um, Allison apologizes for not being here, but as you'll see as I go through this, she um, has um, currently working with coaches and has had, and had meetings from about uh, 3 o'clock today, all the way till I think 8 o'clock um, tonight. So um, so with that being said, um, the athletic program, as we all know, is operated under the guidelines from the MHSAA. Um, they did come out on August 3rd with some additional information. Um, you might um, know that prior to August 3rd, um, there was um, some conditioning that was um, happening with our fall sports. Um, they did um, come out with guidelines for that, and then they came out with more guidelines on August 3rd. Um, so she has reviewed all of these guidelines with the coaches and the staff. Um, the expectations, um, in order to maintain um, the wellness and safety of our students. Um, they have a rigorous um, uh, check-in program that they have to go through for all of these students. Um, so you know, they have to fill out a um, screening form, they have to um, have their temperature um, taken. And they are required to be um, social distancing six feet apart. Um, for these conditioning um, and practices that they currently are having. Um, so the teams have been provided, um, as we call them, buckets. Um, with supplies from hand sanitizer to disinfecting wipes. Um, once we do um, come back into actual um, athletic um, events. Um, all of the athletes and the coaches will be required um, to wear a fa- uh, face mask and shield. And we are, again, asking those, them to provide those. But again, as always, we will provide tho- um, those for anyone that's in need. Um, again, still ensuring equipment is disinfected before and after the use. Um, with that being said, um, they are coming back out on August 20th. Um, on or before August 20th, the MHSAA regarding um, competitions. Um, and uh, whether they're going to be delayed or canceled. Um, currently, the MHSAA has broken down athletics into um, three categories. Um, low-risk sports, moderate-risk sports, and high-risk sports. So those low-risk sports are cross-country, uh, tennis and golf. Um, that also does include swimming, um, at, being considered as a low-risk sport. Um, but as of right now, they don't have access to the pool, um, because that has not been opened up yet. Um, the moderate-risk sports are soccer and volleyball. Um, again, they um, are cleared to begin practice. Um, volleyball is only permitted outdoors still. Um, high-risk sports are obviously football, um, with contact. So they can begin practice, um, but it was pushed back a week. Um, so they will be able to begin practice August 10th. But really, what that means is they'll just be able to begin practice with helmets and um, and gear on. They will still have to be social distanced, there will be no contact. Um, and so um, that will be the week of the 17th, when they can do that with full um, pads. Um, again, we're waiting for, on or before August 20th, to see what this looks like with the MHSAA. Um, currently, whether we um, go in-person instruction or online instruction. Um, the MHSAA um, does uh, govern all of our sports. And so we will get recommendations from them regarding sports and if they will go forward. Um, other sports such as cheer and dance uh, may continue to practice um, with no contact or stunting. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Amy, did you say that, um, I think that, that we're doing temperature checks for the athletes?
Yes.
So.
It is part of the MHSAA requirements.
So it's their requirement?
Correct.
Now, with that, then if we do in-person um, face-to-face school, would we require temperature checks for our, our staff and students?
No, actually, phase four in the um, in the roadmap does not require temperature checks. Um, it is recommended in phase four um, through the roadmap, that families do check temperatures and staff do check their, check their temperature prior to coming to school, but it is not a requirement.
And, and with sports, like you said, that's not Waterford, that's MHSAA dictating that.
Correct.
Gotcha, thanks.
Yeah, and, and that is not part, uh, that's um, not part of the roadmap even for sports that they are required to. It's the MHSAA that is requiring that.
Gotcha.
Amy, if, if we choose to start the school year um, online, virtually, do we proceed with sports under these, these, these recommendations and guidelines?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
As long as the MHSAA continues on with the path that they are um, right now, they right now have, then we would. Again, we don't know what's going to be coming on August 20th. We don't know if they are going to completely cancel the entire, you know, season for, for some sports that are moderate to high risk. We just really don't know at this time.
Thank you, are there other questions here? I think we have Susan probably coming up here. Are there other questions before we move on? And colleagues, we are coming up on about, we have about nine minutes left um, that we have allotted for this discussion. So maybe we should hear from Susan and revisit where we're at. Okay, Susan?
Good evening, everyone, thank you. Um, the information that I'm going to present tonight is um, all for the in-person instruction phase in which we'll be in. So that's to be kept in mind. Um, pieces of the preparedness plan that we are required to submit are the screening um, and the testing sections. I'll go first through the screening. So then again, keep in mind, this is when we are in-person um, and back in the schools. So Waterford School District will follow the guidelines set forth by the CDC um, for the screening of students and for all school staff. We have utilized both of those um, documents um, from the CDC to inform and guide us um, through the procedure in which we are going to take. Um, in addition, Waterford will comply with the Oakland County Health Division, as we're um, instructed to do in the roadmap. Um, regarding implementing protocols for screening students and staff. Um, this, again, we, as, as Scott uh, illustrated earlier, we are waiting for this to become available. Um, we are locally governed, so if there is something in addition um, that, that the Oakland County Health Division sets forth, then we will adhere to that. We're waiting for that. We will be utilizing a program, um, it's called Clear to Go. And this is a nationally-based program. We have several school districts, even here in Oakland County, that are utilizing it. This is for staff, students, visitors, meaning when I say visitors, I'm thinking more of um, like our um, edges staff, substitute teachers. Um, this is for screening and um, case management app that we will use to. that we will use to, um, help us in, um, number one, assuring that everyone has completed the screening before they've come to school. And, um, it will also, secondly, help us in contact tracing in the event, um, we do have positive cases. Um, we are required to report to the Oakland County Health Department, um, of any positive cases and in addition, close contacts. This, um, Clear to Go app is, um, a, a management platform that will, um, quickly assist us in doing so. Um, part of this, um, Clear to Go app is, um, an electronics, it, you can do it on your phone, you can do it on the computer. It's a electronic self-monitoring questionnaire that's completed. Um, there's questions, one of them, which is, um, are you experiencing any symptoms such as a temperature of 100.4 degrees Fahrenheit or greater? Um, if you answer yes to these, you are, um, you get a big red shield that you should not proceed to work, you should not proceed to school. And, um, that will come forth in the database, so we will know that. Um, the second piece is, again, in, um, in-person. We have, um, prepared an action response plan, and there are two flow charts. Um, and Megan, if you can, uh, forward those on, please. So here is the first one. This is the action response plan that, um, if one of our students or staff members have, um, um, a COVID-related, COVID-19-related, um, symptom and/or, um, positive test and/or they have come in close contact with a confirmed COVID case. So we have designed this flow chart and we've already been putting it to the test and following it. We have used, um, the CDC guidelines to inform us of this. They are changing, um, regularly and hence you'll see the, uh, dated on the bottom, updated July 29th. That is the most recent information. If and when the CDC updates this, we will accordingly update these flow charts. So again, it's a confirmed positive COVID-19, um, case on the left-hand side, in the middle. They are symptomatic and awaiting a test. And the last, close contact as defined by 15 minutes with or without a mask, and they are within six feet of the person. That is what the CDC deems as close contact. Um, the next slide indicates, um, if, um, our, how if our student or staff has a household member that, um, has symptoms and/or a positive test of COVID-19. And again, it, um, it walks us through, um, our decision-making tree of how we will handle this. Um, these have been sent to the principals, these are sent to the schools. Um, every single one, um, that we have had in our, in, since we've returned as a, as a body, um, in, on July 6th, we are following these procedures. Um, and the last slide, um, COVID-19 testing. This is, I think, a bit of a misnomer. Um, we will not be conducting testing, obviously. Um, but this is one of the labels in, um, the, the sections of the preparedness plan that we must complete. And again, I state, we will follow the guidelines set forth by the CDC. Note, we cannot force a staff member and/or a student to be tested. It is voluntary. Um, we have guidelines, if they choose not to be tested, on how they can re-enter the, um, Waterford School District community. Um, and so they have a, a way to, to test in or not to test. Um, we will, of course, cooperate with Oakland County Health Division, um, if and when a positive, um, case is confirmed. And we will be assisting Oakland County by collecting information from the individual of who they've had close contact with in the previous two days prior to either a positive test or exhibiting symptoms. So I know that was a lot and I tried to get under the nine-minute, uh, President Ristich. So, um, are there any questions that I can assist and answer?
I have a question.
Yes.
I like to ask lots of questions.
Good.
Um, what if somebody is untruthful on the app? And they send their kid to school sick anyways. And I know some people are probably rolling their eyes, but you know what? On more than one occasion have I witnessed little plastic cups with pink and orange stuff being passed to kids in the parking lot at Riverside before school started. So I want to know, if people are going to send their kids to school, then they need to be 100% confident that everybody's going to try and keep this out of the district. So what will happen if that happens?
So, um, I, um, will, I will speak on behalf of a, a very conscientious, um, staff member, be it a teacher, be it a principal, be it, um, an office staff member. If they see that, um, a child, um, is visibly ill, um, they can ask the child, um, to go to the office, to go to the quarantine room. Um, there, and we will not be taking temperatures, as Amy, um, noted earlier. That's not required, um, as part of this school screening process. If we note that a child is ill, at that point, we can assess whether we take, uh, take their temperature. Um, are they exhibiting the symptoms, shortness of breath, coughing, fever? And at that point, we would, um, contact, um, the parent slash guardian and ask that they be picked up.
Thank you.
And Julie, like we said before, too, those, those buildings and those, um, sick rooms will have, um, those digital thermometers.
Right. Okay. Trust me, I want kids to go back to school so bad that I have buried witness to some stuff in the 11 years my kids have been in this district. And I think 90% of these parents will follow all of these guidelines to the T. It's the 10% that I worry about for our teachers and our kids. That's, that's my greatest concern.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Julie. Thank you, everyone. Uh, let me just finish up. So part of the plan is we need to have in phase five, as we go to the next slide, just some of the things that we will be doing in phase five. So very quickly, uh, the same instructional options of in-person or virtual learning will be provided in phase five. And I want to let you know, phase five, from the governor's roadmap plan, says, new cases, new COVID-19 cases and deaths continue to decrease and community spread is less common, and that's when schools are open. So the strict, uh, requirements back off a little bit, but these are the things that we would still be doing, such as the strongly recommended protocols, uh, as part of phase five, with the exceptions, uh, we want to note, and we, we do that, have that in our plan. Social distancing will be implemented in classrooms when possible. However, classrooms will always remain socially distant from other classrooms, again, keeping cohorts together. Uh, and in place of student handwashing schedule, the district will promote proper handwashing and have sanitizing stations in classrooms. So that's, uh, that's our practice, uh, part of phase, phase five. And that's really where, where we want to get. Um, phase five, um, will allow us to be, um, a little bit eased up on the requirements. So the next steps, uh, board is, uh, we do need to discuss next week when we would meet again. Um, I highly recommend Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. My preference would be Monday or Tuesday, uh, just because we need to get this plan wrapped up and, uh, submitted to the, uh, Oakland Intermediate School District by Friday, and then also submit it to the state superintendent, uh, as required by, uh, Monday, the 17th. Um, so I, I would share too, as I, as I know, we have quite a few people listening and, and for the board. These plans have to be fluid. Um, you know, we will work with them. Uh, somebody mentioned earlier today, well, what if, what if by some miracle the governor says, hey, we're in phase five, uh, by the end of the month? And we need to make those decisions. But it's so important that we look to our leaders, uh, our elected leaders at the state level. As I mentioned earlier, the, uh, county health department. The schools, as you can imagine, we, uh, we have been put in a tough spot. This plan has taken so much time, as, as some good questions have come up. We have to keep our staff and students safe. And during this time of a pandemic, that's critically important. We know the numbers have, have certainly looked better, but when you bring more groups of people together, that's where we're seeing spikes. So we're going to do our best, uh, to put all of these protocols in place. Um, uh, whether we open up, um, to, uh, students on August 31st or, or if it's a little bit later in the year. So, uh, we're, we're open to any further questions as well.
Thank you, Superintendent Lindberg. So, um, colleagues, and for our viewing audience to be clear, what we've just talked about here are, is the, the, what we are putting together in our reports are, that goes to the state of Michigan. So this is what it will take and what will happen when we do return to school at some point. We still do have, um, uh, um, our, our, sort of, our superintendent's recommendation of starting off this, the first, the school year virtually. And I imagine there may be some questions and some, um, conversation we might have around that. So colleagues, um, do we want, uh, I'm going to make a motion to extend our conversation by 20 minutes.
I'll support.
Okay. So the motion has been moved and supported. Um, Secretary Petrushe, will you please take a roll call vote?
Well, can we, uh, do we have discussion briefly on the?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yep, I'm sorry. Motion has been moved and supported. Comments or questions? Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, my thought is that we do have a number of people here and I, I would be interested to hear, um, some of the comments or the questions that people may have out there, things that we might not think of that asked. As I said, people, a number of people reached out to me today. I couldn't keep up with all the questions. Um, and so we do have public comment. And, you know, I, I would, uh, encourage us to perhaps, um, we can have this discussion now, the motion's on the floor, but I think we'd probably have a more enriched discussion if we heard, uh, more from the community on this issue via, there's something like 500 people in this, uh, Zoom meeting right now. And I'm sure there are people that would like to, uh, make some comments and public comment.
Yep, that's what, so, our, we've moved audience comment, uh, at the end. So, and we have our conversation, move through the rest of the agenda and make sure that we, I know we have a list of people that, uh, that want to speak. Um, so I'm with you, John Paul.
So, yeah. So I mean, I'd be inclined to have this discussion if we're going to, uh, extend it a little longer amongst our board, but just that caveat to be, uh, cognizant and aware that there are various people that would like to speak and I would like to hear what they have to say. Thank you.
Absolutely. Other comments or questions, uh, about the motion for extending our conversation to 20 minutes? Roll call vote, please, Secretary Petrushe.
Rob, you're on mute.
Thank you. There I am. Uh, John Paul?
Yes.
Bob Piggott?
Yes.
Julie Jostling?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Ristic?
Yes.
Joan Sutherland?
Yes.
I guess I'll be a yes to then. It passes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Colleagues, let's open the floor for 20 minutes. What questions do we have about the superintendent's recommendation, uh, to return to school 10 weeks fully virtually?
Mike, Mike, oh, go ahead, Rob.
Okay, I just, uh, I haven't spoke much tonight, so, uh, and again, it's, I don't want to. I want to go back to school, uh, but I believe that the superintendent made that statement. Is that the best way for children to learn is in school? But in today's world, doesn't matter what I want, what he wants, what any of us want, I don't think we have a choice. Uh, and again, we, we can listen to 500 people tell us, hey, it doesn't make any sense, we don't feel safe. It, it, common sense dictates this. The, the superintendent and his crew, his staff have, I think, done a very, very thorough job in researching this because again, as he stated, he wants to go back to school, but we're not able to per se. Uh, it's not a knee-jerk reaction to, uh, anything that any board member has said or done. So I just, it, it's a simple thing and I'm down to 10%, so I don't know how much longer my, my picture will be showing up here. But again, I, I, I support the administration. That is their job. They're not reacting to what someone said on Facebook, what someone, you know, thinks or believes. They're doing common sense. We're here to protect our students and our staff. We don't all have to make big, uh, statements about this. It's, we don't have a choice. And it, and I, I hate to say that, but it's, we don't have a choice. It's not what I want. I would, I don't support this, but I don't have a choice. So that's my statement at 9% now.
It's Rob. Bob?
Um, yeah, I think, you know, one of the things I look and, and there's a, a topic of, do we go back face-to-face or online? But yet here we are, all virtual, from the safety of, of our own homes and having virtual meetings. And, um, I, I think that's a, a tough pill to send out to say, hey, you're going to go back in person, but we're doing our meetings virtually. Um, like Rob said, the administration, Scott, they're the professionals. They are the ones that are there every day. Our teachers are the professionals. And I, I would lay money that there's not a teacher, a staff member in Waterford or anywhere that would not want to be in the classroom with kids. They want to be there. We all know that kids are going to learn better and do better face-to-face, in person. But the key is when it's safe, when, when they are safe, when our staff is safe, when the families of our kids and our, the families of our staff can be safe, that's the time. Um, you know, Scott said 20, I, I believe of 28 Oakland County school districts have already gone to that point. Uh, and that's just in the county. Across the state, Ann Arbor, Lansing, you know, gross point. They're all kind of getting to that point. And I think as we get closer, even in the next week, you're going to see a majority of districts starting off, you know, online. Um, when we, when schools closed in March, uh, you know, when the state came in and basically said, all schools are closed, we didn't have even anything close to the amount of cases per day then, than what I, we have now, I believe. And, and don't quote me on that, but I'm pretty sure that's factual. And we closed schools down and sent kids home and staff home. Um, we have more cases now, more deaths. And so while we all want desperately for our kids to be in class, uh, with their teachers, um, we have to do what's safe. Um, you all know, my daughter is a junior at Michigan State. Her classes are all online. I want her to be in the lab, in the classes with the professors, but more importantly, I want her to be safe. And that's ultimately what it comes down to, safety. So.
Rob?
Yeah, I agree with the safety bit. I think that, um, it is important when we look at our roles of school board trustees, the overall goal is we want to keep kids safe. And when we look at all of the information, what Scott's laid out, um, I know they've done their due diligence and they've worked hard on this. And we're looking at what other school districts are doing, right? And, and how that looks. Um, you know, the, the piece that I think from the community aspect that is important though, it's what now are the needs of our community if we go to virtual? That's what's important, right? Because I think that, uh, we, we want to keep kids safe and we know where this is headed. But how do we, uh, approach this, this virtual setting? We've already laid out some great things tonight. Um, but a Waterford is different from a mid-Michigan, is different from a Detroit, is different from a northern Michigan, right? Um, they have different needs. And I think largely that is where the governor stoods or stands on not issuing some executive order or blanket order because Michigan is different. It's such a big state in different regions. So what I want to do and what my particular interest is in hearing from the public is what can they tell us that, that, you know, ultimately, we are the ones that serve them? So what can they tell us that we may not be touching on here? As you've said before, we're constantly looking in, in, at this situation and it's fluid. So we want to make sure that we're, we're contracting and meeting and looking at, at all those needs. And as I mentioned before, the childcare piece wa- was one of the big things that I heard of and affects my own family, right? Um, so I, I, that is something that I, I think is important on that, uh, that public comment aspect that we get that information. But ultimately, yes, we have to keep, keep kids safe. Um, it's, we are in this virtual situation, but it does sound like it's going to look a lot different than, than what it was last spring. Because last spring was a very abrupt changeover. And this is something that we've been planning for and working towards and collaborating with for many months now. Thank you.
Thanks, John Paul. Yeah, Joan.
First of all, I don't, I probably won't get a chance again. So I wanted to thank all of the parents and the teachers and the staff members and the community members who are in attendance with us tonight. We recognize that these are exceptionally trying times and that we are making decisions that are of paramount importance to each one of you. Like our entire parent community that I think before July 31st needed to make the very difficult decision about what your preference was, whether it was to be in person or to be virtual. Those very same difficult decisions are what we're looking at now. And there's no easy answer to that question. We certainly all agree that children will be more engaged in learning for the most part, with some few exceptions. But most children learn better. And it's not just better for them academically, but socially and emotionally to be in that in-person environment. In a normal world, and why this is so difficult is our entire school team, including this board, maintains a precision focus on what is best for kids. But we also retain a precision focus on making sure that we keep our students and our staff safe. Those are our two overarching priorities. They're of supreme importance, both of them. And what COVID is doing is pitting them against one another. We are left with two options and neither of them ensures that we can do both of those things. And so there simply is no good answer. I have a lot of friends and family and colleagues that go into work and have gone into work every day. But these are adults that are in a manufacturing or an office environment where there are safety protocols in place that ensures their safety to the very largest extent that that's possible. But, but we're not making widgets. We are educating children here. Children that hug and run and shout and touch things, I mean, a lot of things. And they sneeze and they wipe their noses. And I mean, let's be honest, they can't remember their multiplication facts, let alone remembering to stay six feet away from their friends. Or how could they, you know, from their beloved teachers who I know get hugs throughout the days? So, so it is a very different world that we're talking about in education than when we look at, when people are trying to draw parallels to some of the other organizations. So I am very supportive of safety first and making sure that we keep our amazing staff and our students safe. And again, I'm deeply touched by the letters that we've received this week. Thank you truly from the bottom of my heart for taking the time to reach out to us and share your thoughts and your perspectives. You shared stories about your students, about your fears for those students, about your fears for your own wellbeing and about concerns for our community as a whole. And while your letters really did vary in terms of what option you were advocating for, what was clear was your dedication for your profession, to your community, and most especially to our students. And for that, I am forever grateful. So thank you.
Yeah, and a quick reminder, as you, as our viewing audience is probably deduced, we've received, we've been in touch with lots and lots of people. We are not taking the action tonight. And we're going to call a special meeting to then take action on superintendent's recommendation. So I want to reiterate that because we, I'm looking at my inbox now and there's plenty of emails to be read. We look forward to continuing the conversation. So as, as Joan said, thank you, thank you, thank you. Are there other comments or questions here? Yeah, Julie.
Hi, yeah. You know, I just wanted to say that I do have kids in the district, so I wrestled with this decision myself. I mean, they've kind of been in the house the whole time, playing Xbox, not doing a lot, away from their friends. I would like for them to get out and go to school. But the thing that it came down to, if you think about it, and I actually chose the virtual academy because for me, as a single mom, when I start to think about them in a high school with 1,600 kids, they go for five days, somebody tests positive, now they're out for five days. They're waiting to see if they have symptoms. Then we go back, maybe for two weeks, then they're out for five days. At this point in their lives, they do need structure and they do need structure in a school setting. But I think I would struggle more having structure in my house, in a school setting, and then on Google Classroom and going back and forth. And then leaving work early to go have a COVID test and wait in line for three hours and call all my family members that they happen to be around because it was somebody's birthday. And so I want you to know that I, this is weighed heavily on my mind. I mean, I spent my entire lunch hour reading stuff. I spent the entire two hours when I got home from work reading stuff. It's, it tears at my heart. But you know, the bottom line, I think, is that's most important to me is our teachers have given us so much over the years. And I really, I would feel very guilty if I tried to push this through and somebody got sick. And kids, I mean, little kids, they're dirty, they hug, they run, just like Joan says, they play. 16-year-old boys, I think, are grosser than little kids. And sometimes they're not smarter than fifth graders. And they do silly stuff and do stuff that's not appropriate. And you know, and I constantly have to rein them in and you know, and when I, when I make a choice, when we were making the choice, and I said, if you go to school, then you can't be around grandma and grandpa, which they didn't like. They like going fishing, they like going out to lunch, they like doing all this stuff. And they don't understand, so I have to make that decision for them. And I think that we as a school board not only have to protect our kids, but we have to protect our staff. So that's just my 10 cents.
I think too, what we're going to see from our teachers, because we see it time and time again, which is the model for creativity, innovation, compassion, and, and really teaching and reaching every student. I know we're going to see that because they do it every single day. Colleagues, any other comments or questions?
You know what, my only thing Mike would be is, and certainly we, we need to hear from our community. Like John Paul said, there's a lot of people here and we owe it to them to listen to each and every one of them. My request would be that when we do have a meeting to vote on this, as Scott said, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I would hope we can do it sooner the better. Because whichever way we go, the district needs to know, the parents need to know, our staff needs to know. And in time, I mean, we are August 6th. And so I think it's imperative that whichever way we do go, we decide quickly so we can get that out to everybody.
I agree.
Yep. Do we want, maybe we should schedule that meeting now, work our way through the rest of our agenda, get to audience comment? Yeah?
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay. Does, so let's start off, does Monday, is Monday okay? Monday, I was just, Monday 6:30, does that work for everyone?
I can do Monday.
Yep.
I can as well.
John Paul, Rob?
Monday at 6:30. Yes, I'll make it work. Yep.
Okay. Robert, are you, I know your battery was draining here. Are you with us? Can you do Monday 6:30? No, he's texting me here. He's good. Okay. Monday 6:30, Megan, Scott, is that, is that okay? Okay, okay. Then that's, let's put that on the docket, Monday 6:30. Megan, does that work?
You bet.
Okay. Monday 6:30, special, special meeting to vote on superintendent's recommendation for returning to school virtually. Colleagues, thank you. Let's move, let's make our way through the rest of the agenda. It's not going to take long. Because I know we want to get to those audience comments. Amy, I know you have to talk to us a little bit about some emergency purchases.
Take myself off of mute. Yes, I do. The board policy 6320 does allow for emergency purchases by the administration and approved by the superintendent. So we have had a couple instances where we have had to make emergency purchases that were over the board limit that you would normally see in an information item and an approval item. The first purchase is the Waterford School District Administration approved the emergency purchase of 2,000 buckets of 1,000 WIPEX 70% isopropyl alcohol wipes for the use with the secondary level for the required disinfecting of student desks. We had talked about that previously, that the EPA guidelines, when it is 70% alcohol, those are approved by the EPA to be disinfecting. Due to the pandemic and the supply chain of these disinfecting wipes, the district had to order these wipes for an emergency purchase in order to receive the distribution, in order to receive them and have them distributed to the buildings by August 21st. We purchased them from Dutch Harbor Brands and they worked with us, giving us a 10% discount and free shipping for a total cost of $152,990. The funding source for this purchase is general fund and possibly the CARES Act money and/or FEMA funds if we can procure that. Okay, the next purchase, and I want to again say thank you to Sam Majers, the Food Service Director for the district. She has been, her and her staff have been working tirelessly. They have been essential workers. They have been working since this all happened back on March 13th. So this purchase here is an approved purchase for emergency shelf-stable meals from JA Food Service and the total amount of $54,290 to begin serving for the first four weeks of school. When we looked at this purchase, these items were at a minimum four weeks out. So you had to order these items at least four weeks out in order to get them. The problem when we were looking at this was if we came back to school in person, we would not have the manpower to, as we have been doing all along, prepare bags of meals for both breakfast and lunch for individuals that were going to be attending the virtual academy. They do have the option to come and pick up meals through, through the Waterford Food Service. And so that is what these, these would be for. And even though we have purchased them and even if we do go to online schooling for those first 10 weeks, these will still be able to be used because as you know, we will still be providing food service to individuals in the district. So if we are going to go online, the only difference would be is that then we would have manpower to actually pack meals for the remainder of the school year. And so you will see on here that it also says that we would be bringing an item for information and action. We may or may not do that depending on your decision about in-person instruction.
Hey, Amy?
Yes.
Can you just tell everybody what shelf-stable meals are?
Yeah, so shelf-stable meals are meals that are completely, do not have to be refrigerated. They're shelf-stable. So there is requirements for fruit and juice. And those are in the form of juices within the box. But they do meet all of the other requirements, you know, the MDE and USDA requirements. They just do not have to be refrigerated.
Thank you.
Other questions for Amy?
So the next, the next item is for information. This is for food service equipment upgrades. So again, the Food Service Department does some, does have some upgrades that they are required to do by the Oakland County Health Department. So this purchase is for equipment for, as it's getting darker in the evening, for Mott, Mason, and Pierce. It includes installation of sneeze guards on the existing service lines. And again, this will be through a participation with Wayne Risa with the collaborative procurement bid process. And again, the funding will be food service. So that will now, as information, that will come back to you at the next regular meeting, which would be August 20th for action.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions for Amy? Okay. All right, let's move on now. Just got a couple, have a couple of things here. Bylaws updates. So moving on to governance. The board is in receipt of bylaw updates to include in the committee of, to include the committee of the whole structure. A recommendation will be presented for board action on August 20th. Do we have any comments or questions regarding our committee of the whole structure and bylaws? Yeah, Member Sutherland?
I just wanted to thank you and Megan. Again, I went through the bylaw updates and there's about 92 pages, I think, that had to be updated or reviewed to reflect these changes and ensure that our policies have been documented correctly with this, with this committee of the whole approach change. So I know that was a ton of work and very much appreciated. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Megan and to you, Dr. Ristic, for that, for that change, for those changes.
Thank you, thank you. And as usual, most, most if not all of the credit goes to Megan. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Other comments regarding our bylaw changes in the committee of the whole? All right, I'm going to move on now to our special updates regarding Title IX. So I'm going to do some reading here. So policy 2266, our nondiscrimination on the basis of sex in education programs and activities is a replacement policy for policy 5517.02, which is being eliminated. Policy 2266 is a mandatory policy that memorializes the key requirements of the new Title IX regulations that the U.S. Department of Education Office for Civil Rights released on May 6, 2020. New, the new regulations go into effect on August 14, 2020, which means that public school districts must follow its mandates when addressing, investigating, and adjudicating allegations of sexual harassment occurring in the district's education program and activities that the district receive on or after that date. So the board is asked to take time over the next two weeks to review this policy change. And a recommendation to approve the changes will be presented at our next meeting. Now moving on to our OCSBA bylaw committee recommendation. The board has also received information on the OCSBA bylaw committee recommendation. The OCSBA Resolutions and Bylaw Committee has proposed amendments and is asking for a vote, excuse me, for votes of member districts to approve the amendments. Again, a recommendation for board action will be presented on August 20th. Any comments regarding questions, comments on those? Okay, okay. So what we're going to do now is we are going to open it up for public comment. We have lots of, lots of people here. We have lots of people with their hands raised. We also, I have a list of people who have reached out to Megan. And so we're going to take these in turn. I'm going to remind everyone, we're not taking action tonight. We'll be taking action Monday at 6:30. So we encourage you to continue to reach out and send us your thinking and your thoughts on this. Before we get to people, please be reminded that comments are going to be limited, limited to five minutes in duration so we can hear from everyone. That's also part of our normal protocol. Members are invited to share comments. However, this is not going to be a time for Q and A. This is a time for feedback so we can take this into the weekend ahead of Monday and to make our decisions. We'll take note of questions asked and ensure that those questions and answers are included. We can update our frequently asked questions. And lastly, participants are asked to avoid statements. And lastly, participants are asked to avoid statements that are personally directed, abusive, or obscene. So I have a list here, I'm going to start off by inviting some people to talk. And then I'm going to get to the people who have their hand raised. I appreciate everyone's patience here. Caitlin Mosseri, I don't see a Caitlin Mosseri, but I see a Nathan Mosseri here. I'm not sure if the same person. If, if, if Mr. Or Mrs. Mosseri, if that's you, would you please raise your hand? Alright, cool. Okay, here we go. Hello, welcome. You.
Hi, thank you.
The floor is yours.
Alright, hello Waterford School Board, my name is Caitlin Mosseri. And I'm one of the many Waterford teachers actively watching and worrying as the COVID-19 pandemic develops. Sorry, you can hear my guinea pigs, they hear me. I'm 29 years old, I have a three-year-old daughter, and I have family with autoimmune diseases. To me, the scariest part of our current situation is the unknown. A recent study published in the Cardiology Journal from the American Medical Association. Found that 71 days after a COVID-19 diagnosis. 78% of patients had heart damage visible in cardiac imaging. It is the unknown long-term health effects that truly frighten me. It's true that when a child catches coronavirus, they tend to have mild symptoms. But what about their long-term health? What about the long-term health of my colleagues, my family, and myself? The decision you are faced with could negatively impact the health of our alumni and staff for decades to come. As a society, we simply don't know enough about this virus to safely reopen school buildings. This is going to be a difficult school, school year regardless of how we teach. But the best way for everyone is to move forward through exclusively virtual instruction. Before you make a decision, you need to ask yourself, how important is the safety of our children? Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Okay, excellent, thank you so much for your comment. Okay, I now have against Marissa Sorensen. You reached out earlier today, there you are, Marissa, I'm gonna allow, I'm gonna invite you in here. Hi, Marissa Sorensen, the floor is yours.
Hi, um, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So I'm a mom to a three-and-a-half-year-old. Who attends to Pansky for special education. Who has autism, so we highly rely on special education services, specifically. Physical therapy, the occupational therapy and speech services. I have to say really quick, teachers, thank you for all that are here, you guys have been amazing. And doing way up and above, I appreciate Waterford teachers so very much. And I also have a child who will be entering the ninth grade. So I have different, you know, one who's, you know, doing normal, regular schooling. And I have one who has special education and IP. With that being said, I've really been thinking long and hard about this. And so I kind of did some research and I wanted to know, I'm a provider, so I've been working through this entire COVID experience. That we are going through. And so I really wanted to know how COVID is affecting our children. Because I feel like, looking at this scientifically is extremely important. And, you know, we have had time to really look at the research on children and adolescents. So I really wanted to see what the AAP, so that's the American Academy of Pediatrics, is saying. And regarding what they, what they think children should be doing with school. And so they had a release that was put out on June 25th of this year. And they, their statement says, the AAP strongly advocates that all policy considerations for the coming school year. Should start with the goal of having students physically present in school. I found that interesting and I wanted to know more, why are they coming, why are they stating that? So obviously, they are not going to make a statement that isn't scientifically backed. Because I hear, everyone is so emotional about this, everyone has a story, everyone has a concern. And so that's the thing about COVID is it's very emotionally charged for anyone. And that's why I think we really need to look at the scientific backing of what is best for our children. Because we can all say, you know, I'm afraid that they're going to get sick, I'm afraid of this, I'm afraid of that. But what is this, what does the research really show? So as I did my, my reading and, and looking. You know, the importance for their statement is saying. In-person learning is well documented, that there is already evidence of the negative impacts on children. Because of the school closures in the spring of 2020. Lengthened time away from school and associated interruption of supportive services, which in my case would be my son. Often results in social isolation, making it difficult for schools to identify and address important learning deficits. As well as child and adolescent physical or sexual abuse, substance abuse, depression, suicidal aviation. So we know that it's impacting that. Policymakers, and this is where I think it's really, really important, you know, superintendent and board. That we need to think about is, there's mounting evidence regarding COVID-19 and children and adolescents. Including the role that they may play in transmission of the infection. COVID-19 appears to behave differently in children and adolescents than any other common respiratory virus like the flu. Much with current guidance regarding school closures as based. Although children and adolescents play a major role in amplifying the flu. They're finding. That with, with COVID, that's not the case. They're finding that children may be less likely to become infected and to actually spread the infection. They're finding, the evidence is showing that children and adolescents are less likely to be symptomatic. And are less likely to have severe disease. So while I heard what the teacher who spoke before me saying, you know, I'm concerned about my health. And absolutely, especially with autoimmune and other issues. But they're finding that these children, they're not spreading it like, like it's thought, like what you would imagine it would be. So. Policymakers should acknowledge that COVID-19 policies are intended to mitigate, not eliminate risk. And that's the most important thing. There's no way for any of us to eliminate risk of anyone contracting COVID-19. It's not going anywhere. And that's why I think it's just really important to consider, what is our goal here? We cannot eliminate the chance of anyone getting this. You could go to the grocery store and get this. And our schools are showing, like the AAP is saying, like kids are not the. The vectors here, they're really not, you know, so. I just think it's important to consider, we really need to look at the facts in regards to even other countries, our great examples who are open. They're not really seeing major increases or increased death or really passing on to family. So yes, are there going to be cases? Probably, I'm not saying that there's not. Again, the AAP is not saying that when we're considering these things, that it should be. You know, considering it for no risk, there's always going to be a risk. I've been exposed at work, I've had to quarantine. We're, we're, this isn't going to go away anytime soon. And so it's, it's alarming to me how much this is going to affect a children's mental health. And I know, and I, I heard the presentation about the social workers. But let's be real for anyone who has a teenager. Are they going to, with their parents home, going to be telling them what they're thinking? Heck, no, they use their friends, they use staff at the school that they trust, they are not going to have that opportunity. My other concerns that I will say is, you know, as a parent who, we are two-income household, we both have to work. I'm a medical professional, I don't get to work from home. My husband does not get to work from home. So how are teachers, and this is, I hate to even say it like this, but. Our teacher's going to be available, because I can't, like my son, I need those services and I need them in person because he's non-verbal. So I don't, I don't know how to help him. So our teacher's going to be available for when I get off of work, because I won't be available to do a Zoom meeting during the day. These are considerations, and I know I'm not the only person who is not working from home. Or having both incomes networking from home. How are parents supposed to teach their children? Yes.
Thank you, Marissa, we're at, coming up on eight or nine minutes here. So we appreciate that, would you please follow, send your follow-ups to us, to the board members and to Superintendent Lindberg? We'd love to continue to hear from you.
Okay, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I have. Cara, Cara Carnes, I believe you're here, you're up. Hi Karen, you're with us now, the floor is yours, five minutes, please, just so we can hear from everybody. Karen, are you?
She's on mute, Mike.
Yeah.
I am now, here I am now, okay, I'm not going to sound as articulate as the two young ladies before me. But this to me is going with the emotional well-being. And I understand the world doesn't revolve around our special circumstances. My daughter is married to the orchestra. That's her favorite part of school, that's why she wants to come back, it's extremely high risk. And so we kind of felt like we were in a situation between choosing before, choosing between. Our, her mental well-being and her physical well-being. And so that's what I'm talking about, music, I think. Is underrated when it comes to some of the other things. So I just have been kind of a Karen, if you want to look at it that way. I'm Mom Karen, you know, and we were really trying to hope to get, I. The fact that you're thinking about going virtual for 80 or 90 days. Takes that pressure off us. Because the only reason we would have signed her up for in-class school was so that she could get orchestra. And I understand the problem with that, with band and everything else. But I did, that was just something I've been in touch with her teacher, her orchestra teacher. And, and he's willing to do anything from home for the kids that do virtual. But I just, I want to throw that out there, not because just to hide people or some people. You know, it is their well-being, and music is their life. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Karen, thank you Karen so much. I'm going to start to make my way down, I have some, some people who did reach out via email, but I don't see you in the participation list. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to start off at the top with the people who have their hand raised. Please, again, five minutes, and if you did contact us earlier and you are here, please raise your hand and we'll get to you, okay? So next, I'm going to pull up Wanda Lee. Let me get you going, please, five minutes, here we go. Hi, Wanda, you're with us, the floor is yours, five minutes, please. And forgive me if, if, if your name is something other than Wanda.
On mute, Mike.
Wanda, are you with us?
I think she's on mute.
Yeah, I can't, and she is, I see that, I can't, I can't unmute her either. Wanda, you're on mute. Okay, Wanda, we'll, we'll check back in with you in a second here. Patrick. Hi, Patrick, you're with us now, you've got five minutes, please.
Hello, my name is Patrick Seymour, I have a, a fourth grader at Beaumont Elementary. Or a soon-to-be fourth grader at Beaumont Elementary. I, I just, you know, we were given the option. And, and I appreciated the fact that the school system created options. And I think that what I'm hearing in this meeting that has me very concerned. A couple of things, first of all, the perception that case counts in this state are rising, that's actually not true. Case counts in this state rose over a month ago due to an increase in testing, which was more than double. And it has stayed level since and actually fallen off some. Although case counts are actually about a week behind because of the way they're reported in this state. So, but you can see that case counts still are low at this point in this state. And that the positivity percentage is between 4% and 3%, but typically below 3.5% on a daily basis. The state, or the township itself has about 75,000 total residents. And we've had less than 0.1%. Positivity rate in this township. So I understand that people have fear of this, I know it's real. But. The fact is that it hasn't really affected our community on the level that it has many other places. Parents were given a choice, and that's part of what the beauty of this state or this country is, is that parents have a choice for what they feel is best for their children. We were given a choice to choose a virtual learning option, which I'm grateful that the Waterford School District has offered. Or sending our kids back to school. You, you highlighted the numbers, 61% of parents said that they want to send their kids back to school, 39% said that they want to stay virtual. I respect everyone's personal choice. Now it appears that somewhere along the lines, the superintendent and the school board seem to be, and I'm, I'm sorry, I understand you guys are making a vote on Monday. But the commentary that I heard at the end of this discussion made it, made it quite clear the way that vote is going to go. That people have already made up their minds, you might as well just have this vote now based on what we're hearing. But. 61% of parents said they want their kids to go to school. And the school board and the superintendent are basically telling those parents, you don't know what's best for your children, we do. And I don't really appreciate that statement, I don't really appreciate that step. I really think that what was said by the second person, and I don't know her name, should really be taken into account. At the beginning of this meeting, Dr. Ristich, you brought up about four or five different news stories around the world. You didn't mention any of the positive stories that exist, which are innumerable. And you mentioned a very minute number of situations where students. You know, yes, they contracted the virus, and that's unfortunate, it's, but it's a fact of life that we have to deal with. The global experience is very different from those small experiences. And I guess my concern is that based on what I'm hearing. People appear to say that they are very concerned about children and they're thinking what's best for children. But really, they're acting more about their concern of liability. Nobody wants to be the first person that said, you know what, we should go to school. And we should let these kids go, they don't want their name attached to it when one kid gets sick. And that there's a positive, there's a positive case, nobody wants the liability or the responsibility of that. But in the end, you're asking us to sign waivers, you're asking us to send our kids, we're agreeing to do it. I really think that that needs to be thought about long and hard, it's not your responsibility, it's ours. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. I'm going to bring in Lori Runk. Hi Lori, are you with us?
Hello Board, I am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, let me start out by identifying myself. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Grayson Elementary, I've been teaching in the district for, going into my 24th year, spending 18 years at Jayno Adams. And I'm actively involved in working with our ELL learners currently in the summer school program. And Mike working with your wife in that program for the last four years. So let me start by saying thank you. Number one, the research is evolving by the day. One case, one death is too much. So forget the emotion involved, I've got family in the medical fields that are, that I'm actively concerned about. And family members that are actively concerned about me going back into a classroom, but that's not my primary concern, my primary concern is our kids. So to the Board, Superintendent Lindberg, to everyone involved as a stakeholder. When we talk about social emotional learning, the thing I've faced with our ELL parents over the last four weeks of this five-week program. Is the information's coming in sound bites. We're getting it on, on a website, or we're finding it on Facebook. And then we're having to dig through the Waterford website to find out what's really happening. None of us really knew that this meeting was going on tonight as a public forum. And we were getting blasts by Blackboard or however it was coming through with email and other means of correspondence, it's hard with so much information coming through. We were getting regular information about the bond vote, August 4th. So the frustration I'm fielding, not feeling myself as much as I'm fielding from my colleagues, parents, and other community members. Is that the Board is working actively with upper administration, upper administration is working actively with the teachers' union, teachers' union is working actively. With all staff, but no one knows that unless it's reported by our union president. So if there could be little Blackboard blasts that go out like tonight, saying we had our open forum. The Board is having a vote on Monday, we will submit our final proposal to Oakland Schools August 14th. Simple, short, concise, and informative. A lot of public stakeholders as parents and staff members are feeling a bit of a lack of transparency, and I think that's an easy fix. So you are doing. So you are doing so much. This call alone, going as long as it has, proves that you are working so hard and you're working tirelessly. I actively keep up on the research because that's just a fascination of mine. And it is an impossible amount of information to sift through. And I applaud all of your efforts. A little bit of greater transparency would be great. So to cut my time, I'm going to get to a few points. Number one, your fluid efforts to tend to the health and safety of our students and staff is commendable. No one is going to be happy with the end decision. I think we're all aware of that. It's impossible to make anyone happy in this situation because it's just an impossible situation. So thank you for putting health and safety first and making this conversation an open one where you want to hear everybody's points of views. There's no need to talk more about COVID data or cases. Any of these cases, if they're preventable, then let's prevent them if we can or at least limit exposure. So thank you for that. Regarding PPE, I know we're providing our own masks as staff members. So I had a question about what PPE is going to be available? Are face shields being given to custodial staff? Because I've heard in other districts that face shields are not the safest thing in classrooms. So any information you have about that, that you can distribute at another time would be great. As far as tech support, and maybe Darren, this is a question for you. Is there any money available to staff members as we have to teach from home if we end up going to a home platform? In offering a little bit of funding to update our home technology, I know with my laptop, the microphone isn't the best. The audio cuts out. I don't know what that issue is. But I'm looking at investing in better technology, in more updated technology. So I wondered if there's any funding being talked about being made available to staff members that must work from home. Secondly, clarity with asking families, do you have a device? The one issue I fielded with my families in the spring, throughout the five weeks of the shutdown, and again, I have two instructional aides working with me in the ELL summer school trying to navigate the issue with what a device is. Smartphones are not compatible with the work we're asking students to do online. They either can't access Google Classroom the same way that we can access it from a laptop or a computer. Tablets have their limitations as well. So are we being clear with families as to what we mean by a device? Because some of these devices are older version cell phones. Some have limited internet accessibility, which means they can't open up the platforms that we're working with. Some can't access Google Docs or Google Forms from the device they're using. So are we being clear enough with families as to what a device should be to make education equitable? So I'm coming back to equity. Because if they have a device, but the device can't access what we're asking them to do, then we're limiting their education. And that's not fair. So can we be a little more clear with that? And offer to families, if your device is a smartphone, we have a computer and we want to put it in your hands? Because I know the district was very generous in offering computers to each student when we had more than one student in a family in our program. Because three kids in a family can't be sharing one device when they're all supposed to be in class at the same time. So thank you for making those efforts to make the technology available. Can we do more to make it more accessible, especially to our EL students and anyone on a 504 or IEP plan? It almost feels like we could automatically give devices to every child that is certified ELL, going through the WEADA testing and qualifying for that programming, any child who's on an individualized education plan, and anyone who's on a 504 plan. That would be an easy fix just to make accessibility easier. Lastly, as we're seeing in the summer school program, I have two aides helping field the chat, helping answer questions, helping navigate technology issues while we're actively in meetings from 9:00 to 12:00 a.m. three days a week. If we go to an online platform and individual teachers like me are working with a class of students, is there any para-support that could be considered for a half hour to 45 minutes a day of direct instruction when we have to meet with our whole group? So there's another set of eyes fielding the comments or helping with the tech difficulties? Because we spend sometimes 50, 60% of our time fielding those issues, just a thought. So thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you. Apologize for the emotion. I know that all of you are feeling it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, excellent. Moving on now to Kristin Wagner. Kristin?
Hi, did it unmute?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you could hear me. First and foremost, before I have my comments regarding what we are discussing tonight, I would be remiss if I did not thank everybody and thank our community for passing our school bond this past Tuesday. As the, the Chair of the Parent-Driven Campaign, I am so grateful that once again, we have had amazing support from our district, from our community members. And I just wanted to thank everyone for making sure that this bond passed because it was critical to our schools. And I am so, so thankful that everyone came out, they voted, and we successfully passed this bond. So I would be remiss if I didn't thank everyone for that. And I wanted to thank all the local businesses. I wanted to thank all the families, everyone who put signs in their yards and shared our posts. It was, it was definitely a community effort. Now, in regards to what we're talking about tonight, I also want to thank our administration, our teachers, our support staff. I want to thank our Board for really taking the time to dig into this. As we have seen things change, obviously, we never expected to be in this position. We had hoped that we would be in Phase 5 by now. Things have changed. The virus has not been as controlled as we had hoped. I know that this is not the point that we wanted to be in. But I am grateful for all of the hard work and for the fact, the compassion that you have for making sure that not just our children's safety is your concern, but our staff's safety. And I think that's often being missed. We know being in the classroom is the most important piece for their education, not just from an academic standpoint, but emotional and social. But we have to remember that we have teachers that come from all different communities, that don't all live here. And that they have concerns too, and they have family members. And we have to make sure that we're taking that into account as well. And this is coming from a family that was part of the 60% that chose to return to school. And our family really struggled with that. I have three children in this district, two in high school, one a freshman this year, a junior, and I also have a student at Beaumont. So I have an elementary student as well. And it was a struggle. We have some needs in our family. And we also have high risk in our family and my children. One of my children is, is at high risk. But we felt strongly about going back to the classroom because of our arts programs. We didn't want to lose access. That was our main reason for going back. And I know that we will still have access to those programs through our Google. And I know that that will happen. But even though I chose in-person and for our children to return, I completely support what you are doing as a parent in this district in making sure that you are taking the safety and the health of everybody into consideration. And above all, we have to do its best for our community as a whole and for the safety and for the health of not just our students, but our staff. So I appreciate what you're doing. And I know this is a difficult decision. And there is no way you can make everybody happy. But I know that you will do what is right for our community. And I have faith in that. And I really, really hope that people will give all of you a little bit of grace and understanding that this is a very, very tough position to be in. So thank you, thank you, thank you for all of your hard work through a very unprecedented, crazy time. And my hope is that we will get through this together and come out on the other side better. So thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Kristin. Okay, Shelley Al, La Salle, La Salle, you're up. Hi, Shelley, are you with us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
I'm, I have quite a few concerns with having two children that are going to be in the fourth grade that both have IEPs. Riverside did a fantastic job as much as they could with everything kind of being thrown together in the spring. You know, no one knew what was gonna happen. There were hopes that we were all gonna go back to school at some point in time. Unfortunately, that was not the case. But one of my children that has an IEP has ADHD. And to sit in front of a computer for hours a day will not work for him. And I don't know how he's going to be educated or if he'll even be the kid that will attend his classes. And then what does that look like as a parent who's fighting with their child every day to sit in front of a computer? Somebody made a pair, said something about making parallels between students and educators with all these other people that went back to work to have all these safety precautions in place. I'm a restaurant manager. And I've seen some of your faces out in my restaurant eating with your kids. So why is my job and my safety less important than an educator inside a classroom? It's kind of hard for me to comprehend all of that. Same goes for childcare. We're gonna open childcare. What's the difference with childcare being open and school being open? So are their lives less important than the teachers in front facing in a classroom? That's also hurtful to me because some of those people have taken care of our kids. And mind you, I had one that was on a feeding tube right before she started school at Stupanski. And it's hard for me to wrap my head around all that. On top of the idea of putting these people in front of our kids, if we, if it's so, you know, scary to send our teachers back to school, what does the affordability look like for people? I, you know, have a certain amount of money that I can spend every year for childcare. But unfortunately, we've all experienced a pay cuts and all this too. So how do we pay for childcare for our kids to go there while I'm at work and my husband's working 50 hours a week too? And NWA, we talked about having the testing still, standardized testing. Well, what about the kids that have IEPs and have special accommodations? How do we do that for them? We're gonna still have sports, but we're not gonna have classes? That just seems absolutely absurd to me. And then, of course, we talk about the numbers over last, like the numbers where we're at right now. There isn't really much of a difference between like the last month and where we're at today. But we were all asked to give a choice and say, hey, this is what we want to do with our kids. And then that choice was taken from all of us. Because I mean, after everything I heard today, there's gonna be a vote on Monday and everyone's already saying, this is the best thing for everybody else. Well, it's not the best thing for everybody. Again, these are our kids. I didn't choose to be a person to mandate masks or check my people's temperatures when I came into work or have them check them or be the medical police when I signed up to be a restaurant manager, any more than a teacher did. So again, I just don't understand why we talk about the parallels between, well, these people on a manufacturing job and they're not around kids. I'm around kids every day. I take plates away from people that they've touched with their mouths and their glasses and I have to wash my hands, just like everyone would have to wash their hands in a classroom. So I appreciate your time. I'm also kind of perplexed because I don't think that you are, that there is any choice. I think that the, the Board's already, and the administration's already made a decision on what's best for our kids. And it's kind of heartbreaking to us when we know what's best for our kids. My child is not gonna learn in front of a computer for five hours a day. My daughter has five different services. When they had Zoom calls, we were doing 10 a week in our house. How do we do that when my husband's full-time, 50 hours a week in front of a computer himself and I'm in the house 50 hours a week? I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, thank you. Mary Gaber. Hi, Mary, floor is yours. You are muted.
Sorry, I didn't, I must have accidentally hit the button. I didn't mean to raise my hand.
Okay, okay, thanks, Mary. Okay, Ado. Ado, are you with us?
I am with you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi. I listened to the whole meeting from the beginning to the end. I appreciate you opening up for us to be able to comprehend and understand. But basically during the whole meeting, all I got out of it was the fact that, you were talking about the elementary schools, the IEPs, the middle schools, the high schools, but I never heard mention of the LifeTrack students and the KMS students. Are they just considered under IEPs? Because I also work for the district myself. And I'm confused on my job at this point because I drive them. Are they going because it's required by the state for them to go to school? Or are they not going? I, I'm just, you know, the meeting was put on us today that you guys were having a meeting. So I was confused about that concept also. But I just, I'm just curious because you guys put a lot of information out there. And I understand that the safety is important. But if I'm an employee also, and I had my choice about it, I think it's very important for kids to go to school. Do I have kids in school right now? No, they're all grown. But I work for the district. I care about the kids. I think they need their education. We've all been home, not working. And it just concerns me that if they decide for the first semester, they're not gonna go back, what makes them think that in November, they're gonna go back? Or, oh, we take the first half off and then we go back for the second half? But the kids will suffer because they need their interaction, especially the special needs kids. So I just, like I said, I just wanted to put it out there that I felt that it was important that, yes, I appreciate all you guys's work that you've been doing and all the stuff that you've been doing to consider. I mean, this is very difficult, I think, for everybody to have to go through. And, but we also can't go without work. And, you know, the, I mean, I, I, but anyways, I wanna, I, I appreciate all you guys' thought. I appreciate you worrying about our safety and stuff like this. But I just wonder if we're just worrying about a small percentage instead of the larger picture? Because we are a community. And as a community, we should pull together. And if you have 61%, which is almost, you know, two-thirds of the people that want to go back to school, why are we taking that away from them versus the 39 that wanted to stay home? So I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Janice? Hi, Janice.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. I am a certified teacher. I have worked as a guest teacher in the school district for about the last 10 years now. The last three, I have actually been a building sub in the district at one of our elementary schools. And I really pride myself to be able to help in any capacity needed when I'm within the building. Whole classrooms, small group, one-on-one, NWA testing, anything, you know, that is, that I'm called upon, I'm able, I'm able to assist with that. Couple of the concerns that I have tonight that I've heard from, that have come up from listening to this. Number one, my daughter is scheduled to go to OSTC through the high school. And wondering if that will be addressed somewhere down the line, being that it's an Oakland consolidated program, whether that will be determined based on which districts are participating virtually or back to school. Another question that I thought of is with the, you said childcare. If the, I'm assuming that you're referring to childcare as full day. If we're home virtually, that they're giving a place for those kids to go to childcare while their parents are working. So does that mean we're putting the responsibility of making sure that all of those kids that are in childcare are on a device and participating in their classroom activities? Because I can't see, and maybe, maybe you're considering after-school only, where kids would be at home all day with their parents and then taken to after-school childcare or before-school childcare. But that didn't, that didn't make sense to me. So I was assuming you were talking about- So I was assuming you were talking about, um, you know, during the day and who would be in charge of, like I said, making sure that those kids were, um, you know, actively participating and, and helping them and facilitating all of those things that they're going to need throughout the day while they're online, um, through virtual education. Um, to keep this short, finally, one thing I want to address is the other is the arts. Um, we've talked about sports. We don't know what sports are doing, whether there will be, um, you know, spectators allowed, whether they'll just be performing, um, you know, for the sake of performing or within the other schools. So looking at that, we've been told that, um, the bands and orchestras won't be able to come together for concerts and solo and ensemble may not have competitions. I have a daughter in color guard and marching band and we're trying to figure out, you know, is that going to, excuse me, is that going to exist? Um, if there's, are competitions going to exist? If there's, if there's not a sport to be there supporting or if there is, but there's no spectators, it kind of takes away the whole need for, um, you know, those kinds of things. Um, they were also asking about drama club, those kinds of extracurriculars that, um, you know, are they going to be available? If sports are going to be available to these kids, are all these other extracurriculars going to be available to our non-athletic students that really depend on them? Okay. Um, thank you all for listening and I know you've got a big decision coming up. So, um, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice, for those comments. Okay, LB. Or I'm sorry, Lindsay. Lindsay Actman, you're up. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much for having me today. I really appreciate it. I'm on the second grade teacher and today I put something together on behalf of the whole Hapland staff of teachers. So for the last seven years of my teaching career, I have made an oath to build a safe learning environment for all of my students. This is the first year that I feel I cannot keep my oath. For the COVID-19 virus is still pressing on strong enough, though we still cannot have indoor gatherings of more than 10 people. Temperature checks are required before entering a building. People still have to wait in cars before they can go in for appointments. And now a new executive order was signed into place due to outbreaks in daycares and camps, now leading to children as young as two years old being required to wear masks in those settings on transportation and are still highly recommended keeping them on when they are indoors. This shows me that the virus is transmittable by children and many schools that have already opened in other states are already having to shut down and go into quarantine without even making it through the first day of school. The social emotional health of our students and staff, as well as relationship building, are big factors on student achievement. By sending kids face to face, we are knowingly putting them in an environment where they could be sent home to quarantine at the drop of a hat. Will be told to constantly distance from their friends, even though there will not be enough space in the classroom to truly successfully distance and constantly told not to play with their masks, costing important learning time and hindering relationship building. If we start all virtual, we can take time building relationships with each of our students in a more relaxed, safe space. They have much more time to focus on our academics. We are committed to providing the same rigorous curriculum and differentiating for each of our students' needs remotely as we would be face to face. So I ask you, which of these scenarios is more likely to yield positive student achievement results? If we go back face to face, um, hundreds of children and numerous staff members' lives will be put at risk. Last spring, hospitals were so overwhelmed, they had to choose between who got beds and ventilators or who had to just be sent home. While parents have the choice between face to face or virtual, teachers do not. We can interview and hope that we get a position, but the district will ultimately have to decide who gets to have their health protected while who will be put at risk. I am only 30 years old, but my husband is at high risk and has really bad asthma. And I have a young baby and toddler at home. So how do you choose between me or my teaching partner who is in her 50s? Or a teacher who is currently pregnant? Or someone else who has an underlying medical condition? All of us deserve equal opportunity to live safely. Lastly, we understand how difficult of a situation this is. Even if we go fully remote, it is still likely that teachers will be instructing from our classrooms, but without a lot of people in the enclosed space, so the risk will be minimized. We still have children of our own who we will have to line up childcare for or make alternative plans. But as you are making your final decisions, I ask you to dig deep down in your heart and ask yourself, if there were no other factors involved, like work obligations, would you openly send your child into a pandemic with so many questions still unanswered, without truly knowing what is lasting effects could be caused? While crossing your fingers and praying not to become a statistic? Because while I remember someone else saying that no school wants to be the first to have a positive case, I truly believe no school wants to be the first to have a student or a staff member die. I've seen what COVID-19 has done to family members of my own and I'm determined not to let my coworkers or students go through that same pain. So I want to thank you because I can truly tell that you are taking our safety and health into consideration. And teaching is something that we really want to be in person for, but sometimes the needs outweigh the wants. And I think this is one of those times. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing those, those words. We're going to move on now. LB. Hi, LB.
Hi, thanks for, um, giving me the opportunity to talk. Um, I've heard a lot of people say a lot of things I've already thought, um, throughout the conversation today. Um, and I do truly understand all sides. People who have chosen the in-person, uh, option, we get a lot of pushback from those who don't necessarily support it. Things such as it's not a daycare, you're going to kill your child, things of that sort. And yes, it's true, I'm a working mom, but I am blessed with a very flexible job. Um, so it's not about being there and being in the home with my child. It's about the mental stability of my child. I love my daughter and I think I'm great, but I don't have the emotional, know, know how that a teacher does. A teacher has a special relationship and it's, it takes a special skill to get our students to do what they need to do without yelling at them. And so many days I fought with my daughter. She was in tears. I was in tears and it just wasn't a productive environment. And the person before me, a teacher, saying, you know, virtual is going to be better. But is it really if I'm sitting here fighting with her and yelling at her the entire day to do what she's supposed to be doing? And, you know, there's articles out there, you can check out Psychology Today, um, that suicide, because of the social deuce distancing suicides during the rise. Is, is that something that we're willing to risk for our students? You know, these teenagers, they need it. Yes, there's social media, but it's not the same as being near and seeing your friends. So there are so many other things that go into it that it just makes, it just makes it such a hard decision. And it was a tough decision to say, yes, I want to send my daughter back. I'm not saying it was easy and I, I floated around virtual, but I knew and I remember what it looked like in the spring. And I have a good daughter. She's not a child that acts out. So I just, I just ask you to take that into consideration that there's so, yes, COVID is real. Yes, it can cause, it, it can cause many to get sick and we don't know the long-term time. But the long-term effects, however, we also don't know the long-term effects of keeping our children away from other children.
Thank you so much. Angela. Hi, Angela.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Good, thank you. Um, my name's Angela Monroe and I have four children in the district. One at Stepansky, two at Knudson and one at Kingsley Montgomery. Um, you know, I want to thank the last lady that just spoke about the, the struggles daily with her daughter. My fourth grader was in tears every single day over the spring, over the schoolwork. That strains the relationship between a parent and a child so much. But even a bigger decision for us is the fact that my daughter that's at Kingsley Montgomery was resuscitated at birth. She has cerebral palsy and epilepsy. She is one of the most medically fragile kids you'll ever meet. And I've heard so many people here tonight sit there and talk about the safety, but safety is not just about keeping them safe from the virus. It's also about them getting the other things that they need. SXI kids, they need that in-person support services like OT and PT and speech. The on-hand's learning with multiple devices. And the way the support services and the teaching has been going and being done since the shutdown, um, including the summer extended session for SXI kids. And I mean this at no fault of the teachers or the therapists, but it's just not working for kids like my daughter. I could stick her in front of the TV and have her watch Sesame Street and she'd get about the same results. And again, no disrespect for the staff because they are doing the best that they can, but it is just not working. And I feel like sitting here listening to some of you guys' comments that my child's needs are just not important enough to some of you guys. Seven out of five SXI parents in my daughter's room chose in-person learning because of the need for them to have in-person services. Our kids are so fragile and we agonized over these decisions. And in the end, we chose to have them go in person because like my daughter has been five months with no actual services. I sit here and I look at her legs cramping up because she's not getting the physical therapy she needs. My kid can't go another 10 plus weeks. There's no guarantees for any of this, but we can't just lock ourselves in a bubble for the next, what, year, two years? Until they come out with some magic cure, we have to learn and find a way to live with this virus. You know, professional sports players, they can go back because sports is so important, but our kids going back to school and learning isn't? And how can you open childcare and run that safely if they can't run the school safely? Detroit summer schools have, the last I heard, have only had three cases out of 300 students. I think that's pretty good. And I've heard other people talk about other schools shutting down. Well, you can't compare Waterford schools with school districts that are in hotspots like Georgia and Florida. I heard the mention that staff needs time to prepare. Well, so do parents. I just, I feel like we were given two choices and tonight, listening to so many of the board speak, that those choices are not real choices for us anymore. That our decisions that we made for our kids that we agonized over have now been taken away from us before the vote ever happened. Honestly, I feel like if you guys took a vote right now, it'd be the same as what it's going to be on Monday. How are you guys going to get these SXI students? The actual learning and therapies that they need when virtual learning just does not work for them? And just today, the governor said that the cases were plateauing. And I just feel like as long as we're in phase four, we owe it to kids like my daughter and so many other kids, that it just doesn't work for them for virtual learning to give it a try. And quickly, I'd just like to add two other things that are kind of a concern for me. I've heard nothing about Head Start classing and how that would be done for our little ones. And then what about the teachers, the aides, bus drivers? Are they going to be employed, all of them and paid? If we're all virtual learning, we already have a shortage of bus drivers. So if they don't get some kind of compensation, are they going to still be there when we do finally get to get back to in-person learning? That's just, I know that's not in the most important thought process with our kids going back to school, but it should be in the underlying thought process. So with that, I just hope that you guys really listen to everything that you guys hear tonight and don't just go with your already made up decisions, please. Please hear us. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Kelly. Hi, Kelly. Kelly Dieterman, you are, you're with us. You're, you're muted at the moment. There you are. Hi, Kelly.
But I'm just listening. I didn't raise my hand, so I will defer the floor to the next speaker who has something to say.
Thank you so much, Kelly.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, I think we are with Sharon. Hi, Sharon.
Hello.
The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Uh, just wanted to say thank you to all the board members for, uh, being here this evening. I don't envy you your choices that you have to make. I also wanted to say I appreciate what you do and that I, at this point, I am not quite sure what my own decision is yet because I, I have a senior in your school system who's had a good education from kindergarten through senior year, to start of the senior year, excuse me. And he is conflicted because he really would like to go to school face to face as a senior. I, I am honoring that as his mom. I, him being 17, I thought he had a, a say in the matter and he wanted to go. And I, I'm not sure about that, but still, um, I've honored that decision of his and chose that. However, I am conflicted. I would prefer him to have a, a online experience due to the virus. And starting with Google Classroom, which worked very well for him last term. I think he could do very well again this term and I support that. I don't envy you your situ, your situation and having to make the decision that you're making, but I do appreciate, um, everything that you're doing. This is unprecedented times that we're in and it's very difficult for everyone, but I appreciate you. And thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Sharon, for that. Okay, I'm going to ask, um, it looks like we, we've made it through our, uh, our particip, address the board. I want to offer one last invitation for anyone else who would like to address the board. Okay, one more here. Jay Smith. Hi, Jay Smith. Jay Smith, you're currently muted. Okay, Jay Smith, we might come back to you here. Okay, Brenda. Hi, Brenda.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Um, thank you very much for, um, having this meeting and spending this time with us. I just want to say I don't envy you guys at all. I appreciate that you're hearing everybody and I feel for the teachers and the parents. Um, I just want to throw out there, hearing some of these stories, there seems to be a common theme, especially with the, um, special needs kids. But that hopefully, if you guys do make the decision to, um, do virtual for 10 weeks, which for me, I have a high schooler and he'll be extremely disappointed, but we'll, you know, we'll deal with it as we have been dealing with things and, um, other people have had more disappointments through this pandemic and anguish. But, um, maybe you guys can come up with something that would address some of their concerns and maybe, you know, I as a parent hearing this, I would, you know, hope that there would be some accommodations, maybe some one-on-one sessions or things like that that could be worked out if you guys go that route to help those people out. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing, Brenda.
Yeah, I heard other school districts were doing some of those, where, you know, allowing some one-on-one, like sessions with the teachers and, you know, I mean, I know they're supposed to be on all day when it's virtual, but maybe something could be worked out.
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you so much, Brenda. Okay. Song Yang. Hi, Song Yang. Hi there, the floor is yours. Song, are you with us? Song, are you with us? Okay, one more invitation. Hi Song, you're unmuted now. Song, we're not hearing anything. I'm gonna take you out of the... If you have questions or comments, please email them to us. We'd love to hear them. Thank you Song. Okay, one more time with Jay Smith. Jay Smith, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Fantastic. Just as an FYI for everyone, if you put Zoom on your smartphone, it's not enough to hit unmute. You have to go into the settings of your phone, go to privacy, and give Zoom access to your microphone. So, lessons learned. It took me a minute. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. And I wanted to say thank you for everyone on the board for giving us this forum, as well as for all of the parents and teachers that have taken the opportunity to share their opinions this evening. What I would like to also reiterate, as a parent of an elementary student within the Waterford School District, it is an agonizing thought to think that you're potentially sending your child into a dangerous situation. It's something that is very personal to every parent, every household, every situation is different. And much like I'm concerned with people that have family members that could be at risk and be susceptible. There are family members, there are people within the community that also have that difficulty in trying to provide childcare for their child while they're doing a full-time job. I'm a full-time employee. I'm a full-time parent. Lately, I've been a full-time teacher as well. And we need to entrust parents to be able to do what is best for their family. And every family is unique. And one of the things that we look at as a democracy, we give the opportunity to vote. Look at the bond. There are many people and many families that were passionate against the bond, just as many, just as there were many families that were passionate for the bond. As a school board, you're elected officials. You're asking the families, you're asking the community for their input, and the community has spoken. The families that have vested interest in their children going to school have stated 61% for whatever reason, whether it's they're not home to take care of their children, they're not equipped with the skill set to be a teacher and the patience to be able to teach their children like the teachers can. We've tried this in the spring and some of us just do not, we do not feel that trying to teach our children in a single, in a home environment is the best solution for us. I have an only child. She is a very bright student. And I don't need to call out who she is and some of the successes that she's had in her brief period going to school. But she's a very bright child. And that being said, I am working full-time in front of a computer all day long. My husband is working full-time, sometimes in and out of the house, all day long. How is it fair for me to put my now seven-year-old child in front of a computer in her own room all day long and tell her she needs to self-govern herself and take care of watching this classroom? Because I am not equipped, my husband is not equipped, we do not have family members that are equipped to be a teacher for her and be a resource for her all day long. It is difficult thinking that I could potentially send her in to be sick. But guess what? We have flu season. Every single year, our children are exposed to germs. That's part of it. And I don't mean to dismiss the severity. Again, it's a very personal decision, a very personal conversation that every individual household must have. If you have people that have genuine fears, educators that have genuine fears of going into the classroom, have we weighed the opportunity of giving them the opportunity to do a virtual classroom versus the teachers that are saying, yes, I want to get back in my classroom? Giving them the opportunity to do some in-person, non-virtual classroom settings? What are all of the scenarios that we are playing out? And I don't mean to make light of this, again, it's just very personal. You've asked the community, the community has spoken. And now it seems like everything that we've put behind is being dismissed. So what really is going on here? Nothing has changed in the course of a week with regards to the cases in the state of Michigan. What has changed in the course of the past week is you have a lot of communities that are speaking up and now saying, we want to go full virtual. And it seems like all we're doing is getting in line with what everyone else is doing. As a community, we've spoken. Now, what is this going to lead to? Thank you very much for your time. I know it's not an easy decision. It's a difficult decision for all of us. But I appreciate that our concerns are being listened to.
Thank you so much for sharing those thoughts. Thank you. Okay. Okay, Song has raised their hand one more time and... Hi Song, you're with us?
Hello.
Hi Song, how are you?
Hi, good. How's everyone? I just want to thank you guys all for everything. And, you know, I'm sure that, you know, you guys taking the, making the decision to go virtual for the first couple of weeks was not taken lightly. But I think just, you know, I'm sure a lot of other parents also think the same thing. You know, we were given an option and we chose and we did not choose lightly. And of course, you know, we just want to do what's best for our children. And if we can keep them in a bubble, of course, we want to keep them in a bubble. But unfortunately, you know, lots of other factors that come into making up these decisions for all of us parents. I am, I have one soon-to-be third grader and another one that will be going to kindergarten at Riverside. I am very nervous. Both my husband and I work in the medical field and just the things that we've seen and witnessed, of course, we're very, very nervous of sending our children back to school. But the thing is that, you know, with virtual learning, it's gonna be difficult. I feel like as parents, we are not equipped to, you know, be able to teach our kids the way that our teachers do. So definitely a lot of credits for our teachers there. And on top of that, I just feel like I am gonna be a crutch instead. I feel like I'm not gonna be able to give my children everything that a teacher would. So instead of being someone that's gonna be able to help them achieve and move on to the next grade or whatnot, I feel like I'm just gonna be a crutch instead. And on top of that, with both my husband and I working full-time, it's very difficult to try to do virtual learning during the daytime and have to check in at a certain time. Therefore, it kind of forces the two of us to look at things differently. Like, okay, if we do virtual learning and if that's the only option that's available, especially during the daytime, one of us is gonna have to quit our jobs. And so as difficult as it is financially for most of us already, I just feel like, you know, I just feel like we should have that option to choose. So that's just what I want to put out there.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, John Smith. Hi John. Hi John. John, we're not hearing you. Still nothing John. John, I'm gonna take you out and then bring you back in. And let's see if that does anything here. Hi John. Okay John, looks like we're having some tech difficulties here. We'd love to hear from you. If you'd please email us. We'd love to hear what you would have said otherwise. Okay. Okay. All right. Any last, any last individuals who'd like to address the board? All right, okay. Colleagues, anything before we go?
I'll just make a statement. I just want to say that I appreciate the community coming and speaking and public comment. The board and administration coming together to hear them out and to listen to them. I think they gave us a lot to think about over the course of the weekend. And as we head back into Monday, there are some very good points made. In that there was a survey given to parents and what their decision is, other things that we take into consideration. So I think we have a lot to think about as a board, as administration. And I thank everybody for this opportunity tonight to have this collaboration and to hear from the community. Thank you.
Anything else colleagues? Julie, you're muted.
Sorry. I have one thing. Do we have any statistics on... Like, I know there were a lot of teachers that got a lot of emails, they don't want to go back. But then some got on here tonight and said that, you know, we need to go back. Was there ever a poll or anything taken of the staff? Like, are we even gonna have staff? Because my biggest concern is, is that we're gonna go ahead and we're, okay, we're gonna push through and we're gonna have school. And okay, we're gonna do what the community wants. And then the teachers are calling in sick or there's a COVID, something happens. And then all of a sudden, like, who's gonna teach the kids at school? I have a real big concern about that, given a lot of the emails that we got today from the staff and, you know, the MEA and everything. And, you know, people can easily go on Facebook and say, oh, we just need to get rid of them all or fire them all. But it doesn't work that way. Unless you want to run out and get a teaching degree real quick. So I would really like to know if we, do we have staff that wants to teach in person? That won't mind teaching in person? I really would like to know that.
I'll speak to that. I don't know if Lisa will want to add anything to that. We certainly do. But I can tell you that over 50% of our teachers are very concerned. And given the federal guidelines, as I've shared with people, there are a lot of different ways that leaves can be requested. And we would expect that to happen. That would be a problem. So that quite honestly is something that we have to look at. And these are tough decisions. So do we have teachers that would be strong in saying, yeah, we want to get back? Yes. But we have more on the other side. Again, you know, what we're dealing with is this is such a culture, right now, we're just dealing with so much fear. So, you know, if we can get through this a little bit more, we see where the governor's at, if we get to another phase. But again, I appreciate everything that I've heard tonight. The team's gonna look at some of these things. Again, I hope people realize, we have made, we've monitored, adjusted every time we've gotten feedback. We'll continue to do that. But that is an issue that a number of people that we would expect would put in for leaves. And we have to grant them. And a number of them are paid options as well. That's what the federal government has put together and put us in. It's a tough spot for everyone. I don't know if that helps Julie. Lisa?
I mean, we talked about that today at work. The federal, what is it, 12 weeks, 10 weeks? Can't ask any questions, two-thirds of your pay, yeah. Can't say a word about it, gotta let it happen. I do know, we, everybody's taught, that's the big buzz the last couple of days. Okay.
Thanks Julie, thanks Scott. Colleagues, anything else? Okay. And for our viewers, tonight was a regular meeting. This, we agree, our schedule is set way back in January. So this was a regular meeting. We meet the first and third Thursday of every month. And we're always available to have audience comments. But I just wanted to point that out. And looking ahead now to our future, we have our special session, which will be Monday 6:30. We also have our regular meeting August 20th. We're talking about the bond election results, our summer tax collection, our policy updates, food service equipment upgrades. And we also have some reinstatements coming up here too. So, seeing no further business, our next regular meeting will be held on August 20th. And we have a special meeting Monday night 6:30. To all the viewers and attendees, thank you, thank you, thank you. Please let us know. Rob, what's going on?
I'm sorry, I've been fighting between two different iPads here, trying to get my voice because I couldn't reach anything to work. I want to personally thank you as board president in running these meetings, in keeping the board together, in cohesiveness. I wanted to be president and you are doing so much better of a job than I could have even imagined. I don't know if Scott realizes what a jewel he has in you. And I just want to thank you for that. So that's all I have.
Well, thank you. Thank you for saying that, Rob. We've got a pretty amazing team here. Thank you to you and to all my colleagues. Thanks again to our attendees. Please email us, let us know. And we appreciate this. Seeing no further business, our meeting tonight is adjourned. Thank you everyone. Have a great evening.